Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the Lafayette City Council meeting for June 17th, 2025, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Clerk Beck, can we start with a roll call, please?
Mayor Monget.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wong.
Here.
Counselor Barnes.
I believe he's running late today.
Counselor Freethan.
Here.
Counselor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Counselor Sampson.
Good evening.
Counselor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Okay, thank you so much. Tonight, we'll begin with public input. If you wish to speak during this time, please make sure that you grab one of these white speaker forms that you can access through the glass doors in the back. Fill it out and pass it over to Clerk Beck, and we can get you on the speaker list. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do so. You may also call in as well. Tonight, we do have a public hearing under item I. That is a public hearing for the rezoning of certain real property described as Lot 1A, West Ridge filing. So if you're here to talk about that specific public hearing, please hold your comments until we get to that hearing under item I. But if you'd like to discuss any other topic, now would be the appropriate time to do so. So we will begin with Frank Archuleta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here as a voice for the unknown, which are now known at the Lafayette Cemetery, the 200 names that we have come up with. Historical information: The political machine of the Ku Klux Klan and the white supremacists were devastating and caused trauma, fear, and pain to the Catholics and Latinos in Lafayette. There was a racial component involved in city politics at that time. Now, there are no federal, state, or local codes or rules covering what can be stated on city-produced plaque on public property that the city owns. True facts and evidence: Colorado State Statute 1912 Burial Laws, the law was enacted in 1907, 446, Saxon's Endorse Permit. To keep records, also persons in charge on any premise shall return permits endorsed to the local register, which is the town clerk. Lafayette County clerks and cities failed to keep individual burials as required by state law in 1907. Colorado State Statute 1921, 446, burial permits. Colorado State Statute 1941, Section 114, the local registers, which was the clerk, shall be in charge with the duty of finding all permits returned to him endorsed by the Saxon and submitted to the county clerk. Death and registrations, death certificates were required in Colorado around 1906. Historical information on what is legal and what is not legal when it comes to burial process comes from the Physician-Paclet reference to the International List of Causes of Death, United States Department of Commerce, 1914. Duties for tracking the town city burials were the responsibility of the register, which is the clerk and recorder in Lafayette. From 1901 to 1952, the level of negligence exhibited by the register and the town clerks, where there was 200 buried, that were not in the city database. This is some plaque language here. The plaque recognizes and honors the forgotten infants, children, women, and men buried in the Potter's Field section of the Lafayette Cemetery. Starting in 1923, the Ku Klux Klan dominates state and Lafayette politics. Its influence persisted through the '30s, actually all the way to the '60s, early '60s. Due to discrimination and lack of oversight on the part of town clerks at the time, including Henry Mathias and Fred Audrey, cemetery burials confirmed, as several historical sources show, lost or unknown burials were predominantly disproportionately Latinos, Catholics, and immigrants. Supremely, many of these people's stories were lost as well. As many as 200 unknown people were buried in the Potter's Field and other parts of the cemetery. The people of Lafayette recognize this loss and are committed to remembering the mistakes, so that history will not repeat it again. It is time for a historical plaque at the Lafayette Cemetery. It is time to commemorate and to acknowledge the 200 laid to rest in unmarked graves in the Lafayette Cemetery. It is time to tell the truth, historical history and language, and language is important in telling why this happened. It is time to tell the truth. The truth will set us all free. We've been at this, folks, for over a couple of years here, and it's actually devastating as far as what transpired within the city of Lafayette with this Ku Klux Klan. As I stated, your town clerks, at the time, they were still involved in 1963 in Lafayette. And in 1925, Fred Audrey was the head, basically, as far as the Klan here, to go down to Colorado Springs and represent Lafayette at the KKK State Convention. Also, you know, Henry Mathias was a Saxon still of the cemetery. Why did they take these records? Could have been two factors. Either they gave them the records, and because of the racism and discrimination that was going on, they didn't log them in either into their record books or onto a map, or, basically, Hennig had the offer to me to give them, and I'm sure he gave them. Just like I stated before, Louisville only has three, and he handled both Lafayette and Louisville as far as burials. So basically, that tells us, and we know what the racism's been about in this community. Our families have gone through it. They were here those period of times. And we understand as far as why this racism took place. Our families are buried in that section of the cemetery. It was the worst part of the cemetery. As it sloped down, that was enough with the weeds there, and the horse and cow manure place was right there. It was the worst part of the cemetery, folks. The very worst part. We must serve justice and social justice must be served. We must be able to acknowledge all these unknown, which are now known. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Martha Chavez.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Martha Chavez, and I have been a resident of Lafayette my entire life. My family has a significant connection to Potter's Field, as my mother, great-grandmother, aunts, and other extended relatives are buried there. This history is critical to continue education and healing of Lafayette community. A wholehearted... I wholeheartedly support the plaque language put forth by Frank Archuleta and Doug Conroy regarding the Lafayette Cemetery in Potter's Field. It is essential that we honor and acknowledge the historical context and facts included in this plaque. By doing so, we enable our community to educate itself about our past, reflect on losses, the losses of 200 unknown burials, which are now known. As we must learn from these mistakes to ensure that they are not repeated, please consider passing this plaque language, and thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Marsha Richardson, or... yeah, Marsha. Sorry, I, yeah, please.
I'm Marsha Robichaud. I live in Old Town. In fact, I live in the house that the oldest son of the founder of the town built. As you guys know, it's on the ghost trip, too, so y'all stop by. I'm here to support this moving forward rapidly. It's been much, much too long. And the thing that makes me the most happy is that we do have everything. We've done it before. Look at what we did at the swimming pool. I was there when they rededicated that, and it was just a magic, magic event. We know how to do it. We know how to acknowledge what happened, and we know how to say the truth, so we don't repeat it again. Exactly what she said. So I really, really encourage you to look and see that we got this. We just needed to get off and do it. So please, I really, I want to be there when this is dedicated to. I was there when the family came and had their funeral. These 200 people need to be acknowledged, and justice needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Phyllis Rodriguez.
Hi. Okay, I'm a longtime resident of Lafayette. I came to Lafayette when I was, in 1949, I was 10 years old. And when I was 13 years old, my fam- our family moved to Lafayette. Was 13 years old, had two little cousins. One was three. That was buried at the Lafayette Cemetery. And one that was six months old was buried at the Lafayette Cemetery. Hennig or Jerry took care of them. We had the service there and everything, and I, we buried him. I know exactly where they're buried. And there is no sign. My family couldn't afford plots, you know, like the headstones. So there is no headstone there. And so I really am supporting this plaque, because the people that are buried there that have no record should be acknowledged. And that was done a long time ago. The city has no fault now, but the city had fault back then with whoever was supposed to record it. And if you have any kind of feelings or put yourself in our spot, it would be, it would be really good if they could have a plaque, acknowledge everybody that is buried there that does not have any recognition. And I thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Ryan Rout.
Thank you. I live at 206 West Chester, but unlike many of the other people who have been longtime residents, my family and I are relatively recent residents of the city. But the reason, one of the big reasons we moved here, we used to live in Gunbarrow. We bought our house in Gunbarrow in 2000, around 2000. So we lived for, you know, 23, 24 years in Gunbarrow, but what was really attractive to coming here was the attention our children got, my older son got at school. The fact that we're tied to out here for our work, and we increasingly became more attracted to being a part of a small town. And we really enjoy living where we do right now and being able to access the town and love having all the people come by and just meeting with people. And I guess the reason I'm here is because, I mean, I would like to encourage you guys to include the names on the plaque for the cemetery. I became interested in this because Frank is my neighbor, and so we would talk about this. And I was just thinking about the nature of a cemetery compared to other funeral rites, and, you know, it's not like having your, you know, being cremated and having your ashes scattered in a private, personal place. It's a, it's a public place. It's, it's, it's an address for people to come and to continue to remember. And as such, you know, I think that if we can't identify exactly which spot that they're in, we can at least identify that they are there. And I think their names tell a different story than if the names, than the story that would be told if the names were not included. And I think people ought to be able to read the names and make, make their own connections or their realizations when they see the list of names that they may not make if the names were not present. And I, and I think some people might argue that, that, that we, we should not, this is a product of a different time, and we shouldn't go back and revise all of this. But that's the nature of learning. You know, first there's ignorance, then awareness, and then a decision, and the process continues with experience. Ignorance precedes awareness. It can't come after. And, you know, as Maya Angelou said, "Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better." You know, and likewise, you know, I think one of the values, you know, certainly one of the goals, you know, six goals of the Constitution is that we're, we're obligated to make a more perfect, you know, in this, in that case, union. So, I mean, once we, we know different now, we feel differently now, and I think we have an obligation to make this a little bit better if we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Peter Salas.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing this time to be spent on this topic. My name is Pete Salas. I live at 1710 Zeus Drive, where I've had a residence for the last, since 1985. And so I've watched a lot happen in Lafayette. It's a much different community than when I moved in. I'm here because I want to support Frank Archuleta and Doug Conroy's proposed language for the plaque. There are two things. I, I think we need to identify and name the people that they've identified who have been forgotten. And you can go to the cemetery and see the names of others who have not been forgotten and finally remember who they are. These forgotten folks don't have, don't have that same type of recognition. I, I'm concerned, I have a copy of the language that was submitted in your notes for the, that the Lafayette History Museum has provided. I find it very lacking, and the reason I support Frank and Doug's language is because, well, for a couple of reasons. One is that the statement that the Historical Society put together does not, it does not mention the wrongs of the past. And one, one thing says here, although we cannot right the wrongs of the past, we can begin to atone for them. I don't believe that you can atone for the past unless you recognize what the past consisted of. And the reality here, and what people refuse to, in some ways, acknowledge, is that Lafayette was a white supremacist town. And the people who were responsible for what's going on in St. Gary were guided by white supremacy. We have not completely done away with white supremacy in our society today, but we need to recognize that it exists, and we need to call it out for what it is. And we need to hold those people who were responsible for it called out the same way. The people who perpetuated the wrongs were under the guidance of white supremacists, the Ku Klux Klan, and others, and they are responsible. I believe they knew what they were doing when they did this, and the sins that they committed against the people of Lafayette and the citizens should not be forgotten. And we need to call it what it is. So I wholeheartedly support the language, the language that Frank and Doug put together. I would just add that, that I think it would be appropriate to include the sentence regarding, we cannot right the wrongs of the past, but we can begin to atone for them. And in my mind, atoning for those, those wrongs needs to be, we need to call it out for what it is. And we can't forget it, and we need to call out anyone else who comes to our community and brings this type of behavior to us and call it out for what it is. What, what we, what we experienced here and what the past tells us is that white supremacy was in power. There were individuals behind it, and we need to call them out, and we need to name them and let them know that we will not forget, and that their history is going to be written in our town. And we need to be able to recognize the misdeeds and especially recognize the individuals who have been forgotten, men, women, and children in our cemetery, and acknowledge that they, that they deserve the recognition that we need to give them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Andy Valenzuela.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. As a Lafayette Residence for Life, resident for life, I just want to say one thing. As a military retiree, too, I grew up in this town, and it was a very close-knit community. I've noticed in the past, though, things are not as close-knit as they've been, that they should be, and it's because of the growth, and I understand growth. Their growth is coming everywhere, so I do understand that. But you gotta miss that part. You gotta miss that, that community, the community aspect of it, and how you know people, how you know your neighbors, how you know the people on the corner or maybe up the street or something. That's gone. That's totally gone. Lafayette's changed. Lafayette is not the same town. So what I'm asking you to do is go back to Lafayette. Come back to Lafayette. Bring it back. Take care of the people who were here first. Take care of the people who have their, their seeds here, like my family, like Frank's family, like the Chavez family. That's, that's what we're, that's what my concern is. Let's not forget the past. I believe in taking care of your own. As a Marine of 28 years, you know, we all deserve gratitude and love for our country and our Corps and how you stand for the pledge and really understand what it means. A lot of people don't do that anymore. They stand up, but they don't really think about what it's about. That's what I'm asking you guys to do. Do the right thing. That plaque deserves to be out there. These people deserve a burial. As a kid growing up in this town, I also was capable, or got to work as a youngster for the city. And I worked at Potter's Field, and I didn't even know it was Potter's Field. They used to dump stuff there, trees and clean up and just throw it out there, and then we'd have to, you know, get rid of it as kids, you know, and we'd help the city personnel do whatever we had to do to clean it up. I didn't even know that was Potter's Field. But now, after reading and understanding what it's all about, they deserve that proper burial. They deserve recognition, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Tony Munoz.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Tony Munoz, and I'm a native of Lafayette. Excuse me. I live in the same house that my grandmother raised all of her children right on baseline. And all of my aunts, a large number of them lived on baseline, and the KKK would march on baseline, usually on the weekends. And, and they came from, I know for sure, Longma, and they, they were farmers, and it's, it's interesting, because we are a community. We are really tight, I think, still. We have a real deep connection, and I have to give full disclosure. I'm almost related to a lot of the people that have spoke. If not related, I've been raised with them since I was very young. My parents were one of the first Hispanic business owners right on Lafayette Pulp Road, and I love this community. I'm super passionate about it. I am very Catholic, and I know right now, people, we can't afford to bury our, our family, and so a lot of family members have chosen to cremate. Well, being Catholic, that's okay, but we are supposed to bury the remains of the cremated. And so this plaque, I am all for it, because I think there's a large number of the community that need a place to still grieve some of that past, but heal from it and, you know, be able to put flowers there and move on, and we have a very diverse community, and I love that. I like these new people, and I love our original people, and I hate it when they move. I realize it's expensive, and a lot of them will move and come back, which is great, I mean. And even though they might leave our community, they come to our Walmart, they come to our King Supers, they come to our church, they come to our Art Night Out. King Supers, they come to our church, they come to our Art Night Out. They still come here all the time. And it's really funny, they drive by my property, and they honk when they go by. That's an old-fashioned, small-town gesture that people used to do in the old days. I met two gentlemen last night that are doing an internship, I think in Boulder, Gun Barrel, somewhere in there. They're electrical engineers. And they were just asking me, "How much does it cost to buy property here? We want to live here. We're praying that we get," not praying, "we're hoping that we will get a long-term employment with this company." You know, what can we do? So, I know we attract a lot of different people, and that's part of why I love it so much. I know it's our ugly, beautiful history, and I apologize. I'm not usually down, but there's little things that we need to address, we need to, you know, put it out there. And so, I really would like to encourage our council to approve this. I think it's super important for, for not just the old folks, but moving forward, because being educated with our history is imperative, and so that we don't repeat it. And then, one more side note, I know we were supposed to get a plaque up for our Mary Miller Theater, and I'm wondering, maybe we can't afford it, or if somebody's really overworked, maybe we can get an artist, some artists to throw in their hat and say, "This is what I would think it should look like," or this. Right now, it's like a piece of cardboard, and so, just an idea, but just trying to keep it really what it is. I love it here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Karen Norbeck.
Karen Norbeck, 800 East Geneseo. Good evening. I stood at this podium in 2016 and advocated for the Lafayette Historical Society, now renamed the Lafayette History Museum, when they asked the City Council to make them a board. They later withdrew that request. I was part of a group that met with former City Administrator Gary Klapacki, trying to gain more funding for the museum and historic preservation. That resulted in voter approval for the storage tax, which provides museum funding. It breaks my heart to be here tonight, speaking against them and the language they have provided for the cemetery plaque. I guess some board members who I've known for decades might not speak to me again, but this is too important, and I fear if there aren't some blunt words spoken, this antiseptic piece of fluff will end up on a plaque as the end result of all the work Frank Archuleta and Doug Conroy have done to bring this part of our history to light. When I read the language, one word came to mind immediately: whitewashing. This language conveniently sidesteps the city's role here, speaking about prejudice and neglect without, while not adding the words "by the city." Perhaps Doug Conroy, a lifetime LHS member, can't boast about a PhD in history, but he has something more valuable to offer, because his life has revolved around this town. His family, strong LHS supporters, owned the Lafayette and Lewisville newspapers where he worked as a reporter. He wrote Lost Lafayette, Colorado, in 80026, and Illustrated History of Lafayette, 1829 to 1929. His knowledge is the reason for the name Willoughby Corner. I will take Doug's word over anything the Board of the Museum has to say about this topic. You can see in his June 10th response to the Board's president that he has much more knowledge about what happened, including burial information about victims of the Columbine massacre, a topic about which the president has written a book, and who proclaimed no segregation after merely walking around the cemetery. I have watched for years as Doug and Frank tirelessly work to unearth the truth about Lafayette's history. I remember that Frank, when looking for descendants of Rose Lueris, went to mortuaries, finally finding a lead in Brighton, literally going door to door until he found someone. He brought them to Lafayette when the pool at the rec center was named in her honor. I attended that moving ceremony conducted by former Mayor Harkins, who could barely keep from crying. I watched as former Mayor Lynch read a proclamation formally apologizing for the city's role in Rose's story. That was a 1934 lawsuit arising from the "white trade only" sign painted by Town Clerk Henry Mathias on the new swimming pool that Latinos helped to build. The city's work to write her story won an award. I was proud of my city for the action it took when Frank brought that story into the limelight. We stepped up and owned that history. I am beyond disappointed with what I see in your packet tonight, and that my city has pushed aside the people who uncovered another travesty in our city's history, one that would not have come to light without their work, and I am offended on their behalf. They are the experts here. To borrow from Bob Dylan, "You don't need a weatherman to know which way the wind blows." And back in the 20s and 30s, that wind was blowing white sheets around on the clotheslines of many of the people who held top positions in this town. Town Clerk Archie was a recruiter for the KKK. Are we to accept that these people would treat Latinos with respect? The narrative in your packet attempts to downplay or dispute this part of our history, and Doug easily provides detailed documentation to rebut it. Why are we discounting his work in favor of a board of directors who weren't even listed on their website until I asked who they were two months ago? There is also no information about when and where they meet. Where are their minutes? Did they meet with Doug and Frank to discuss their research, or just listen to their president? Moving forward with this language and leaving unaddressed the city's role will erase the giant step forward the city took in acknowledging past harms done to Lafayette's Latino residents. After seeing this tonight, I would caution the city about using the museum for historical assistance going forward, and there is no way information related to this topic should be under their care. I fear there will be more whitewashing. It should be noted that the research summary from their president contains two versions of the plaque language from Doug and Frank. One matches the version I was given by Frank, and one does not. The city is responsible for what happened at the cemetery and needs to take ownership, not couch it in general terms and give itself a free pass. The legacy of those past officials is clear. What will yours be? I am counting on you to make the right choice, because right now, the actions by the city, good intentions aside, have created a new divisiveness. To Frank and Doug, thank you for your dedication, and thank you, council. I await your discussion.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Preston Patton.
Good evening. I'm Preston Patton, 2389 Indian Peaks Trail. I want to thank you all again for your service to the community, and I just want to say, I've attended a lot of council meetings where Mr. Archuleta has spoken, and I am so blown away by his dedication to social justice, and it's very heartwarming to see that it's all of his hard work is coming to fruition. I'm here to talk about a serious safety issue on Indian Peaks Trail. Indian Peaks was developed in the early 1990s pursuant to a very fat document that exists in the city planning department's offices. It's called the Overall Development Plan, and it's an agreement between the Boprey family that owned the farm, McStane, the developer, and the city of Lafayette. And the deal was pretty simple. The city of Lafayette was desperate for a golf course, and McStane, the developer, wanted waivers from a long list of provisions of the city code. And that's what the Overall Development Plan, 50, 60 pages, laying out all of the exceptions that McStane got from the city code. But among them was that the main road through Indian Peaks, Indian Peaks Trail, all of the homes are on cul-de-sacs or courts off of Indian Peaks Trail. The main road was permitted to be built much narrower than the city standard for roads, with much tighter turns, and with sightlines way below the city code. Also, a sidewalk on only one side instead of both sides. And the picture you see is the sixth accident, I'm told by people who've lived there longer than me, the sixth accident at a curve that my house sits on, and before that car turned over and landed on the sidewalk, it knocked down and completely obliterated a 30-year-old tree. So, I think from the picture, you can get a sense of how fast that car must have been going. Also, this curve, not only is it tighter than the code provides, with a sightline less than the code provides, but for some reason, it's like tilted in the same direction that centrifugal force will take a vehicle going around that curve. And so, we met with the city staff and asked them to consider putting speed bumps on Indian Peaks Trail. The speed limit is 25 miles an hour. Nobody goes 25 miles an hour on Indian Peaks Trail. That car had to be going at least 50 miles an hour, if not more, which is very common. And we have to do something, or imagine if a family, or a child, or anybody had been standing on that sidewalk when that car flipped over on the sidewalk, they'd be dead. And I urged the city council to work with the staff, to do something to get us speed bumps in there, so that we can get the situation under control. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing I wanted to say, in the, that road should have been built as a high-capacity collector road. That's a term that I learned from Jeff Hart, but it wasn't. It's narrower, it's curvier, and in this Overall Development Plan, the agreement between the city and the developer, it specifies that Indian Peaks Trail should be laid out to provide a relaxed and interesting driving experience, which is reminiscent of a country lane. And that's what it is. And we can't have people going 50 miles an hour on a relaxed country lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Roy Johnson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Roy Johnson, 2547 Sweetwater Circle. First off, I've been, tonight, I'm a relative newcomer to Lafayette. I've only been here since 1982, so forgive my youth and inexperience in public speaking, please. Today, I'm speaking regarding the $74 million tax question. I'm speaking today regarding the three discussed capital improvement projects, to strongly urge council members to separate them into three separate ballot questions, if you so choose to move them forward. I've been following the capital bonds exploration for a couple of months now. I attended several meetings, including the council workshop on May 27th, wherein the results of the polling and other public input was discussed. I also reviewed the video of that workshop, be sure I got my quotes and information correct here. During this workshop, it appeared to me that council members were in favor of all three projects, contrasting notably to the substantial variance in public support of the three projects. Polling information showed that the rec center project was the most widely supported by the public, the service center second, and the civic center the third. There was also community feedback information presented. There was a notable difference in the support of three projects. 86% support investing in the rec center, 78% support investing in the service center, and 49% in the civic center. Also, in the community feedback report, that stated many residents indicated that projects should be separated into a few separate questions. During the workshop, one councillor stated, "80% of the people want to do the rec center," and later, we all agreed that the maintenance center is scary. So, it has to be done, so tying those two together, if I can get the maintenance center done, you know, and get, but the people seem to be asking from the rec center. Another councillor commented, "I think there's two, the rec center and service center, those have to go, those have to be operated, those are needed immediately. We need to group those two." He said he was open to grouping all three, or put it separately and let the voters decide. So, there's two options there, we're grouping all three, or let the voters decide. In response, that mayor's body might be setting up for failure, though. The councillor replied, "It's up to the voters," right? And he continued, that councillor continued, "I originally thought that maybe we could separate all three and see what the voters want, but it doesn't seem that the service center alone is going to get anyone to vote for it, and we need to group it with the rec center." The mayor said he thought it would be better to put all three on this year at once with property tax, and as it would be the most likely to get everything passed. And later, he said, "It looks like the three of us like to bundle all three together," referred himself, councillor Fred Lunt, and Mayor Pro Tem Wong. Another councillor commented and stated he wished to separate civic center and rec center and service center, that might be problematic to separate them all out, continuing, "I think we need to recognize the fact that people really want that rec center," and said he wouldn't get the service center across the line, thus, he wished to bundle the rec center with the service center. He expressed a desire to give the residents the option to say, "Let's do something else with the civic center." As I open, I strongly urge you to put the three projects on the ballot in three separate questions, if you choose to forward all three, or two in separate questions, if you choose to forward two. The city administrator advised that the cost of separating the projects on the ballot is minimal. From the discussion, it seems to me that bundling projects together in a ballot question is coercive and manipulative, forgive me, to say to the community, for example, that you, the voter, if you want the rec center so much, you have to give us the service center. If you want the service center so much, you have to give us the civic center, by bundling them together. My assertion is that voters have the right to choose freely what they want and what they are willing to pay for, for this tax issue. I'm not asking you to give them that right, I'm asking that you do not take it away. I urge truly free voter choice in a ballot. Separate ballot questions, one for each of the projects you wish to move forward with. The results are ends, the ends, what some of all you seek at having all three projects may be honorable, but the ends don't justify the means of a manipulated coercive ballot. I believe each of you are good and honorable, but I believe a manipulated coercive ballot is not. I have not expressed my personal opinion on the merits of any of the three projects, as it's not relevant to this discussion. I believe the honorable means, the means of being a truly free, free-choice ballot, does in fact justify the ends, whether those results are consistent to what I prefer or not.
And, Mr. Johnson, you are, are your five minutes?
I've got two.
If you don't mind, just quickly wrapping up, please.
You're on, George. Three separate projects, three separate ballot questions, a truly free ballot choice. And one more to line, a truly free ballot choice is how each of you got here. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Thomas Razzo.
Thank you, City Council. I'm here today to support Frank Archuleta and Doug Conroy's position on their memorial plaque. My family has lived in Lafayette area approximately over 100 years, and I'm assuming, I don't know exactly, but I'm assuming that a lot of people that were misburied or unidentified in Potter's Field were probably relatives, and unfortunately, these people, at the time, didn't have a voice or the resources to provide for themselves. You know, after several generations, we are positioned to provide for this. And one of the things that, you know, I would like to present is, I've worked with Bridget Keating on the Lura deal and the DDA deal. My family has a foundation that we've worked on several projects in Lafayette so far, and what I'd like to do is offer to pay for the plaque. So, you know, I know that the city sometimes has problems with financial resources, you know, we're here to help, and we'll make that come in. So, I want to put that out there.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. Next up, we have Frank Phillips.
Hello, my name is Frank Phillips, living in Lafayette. Mayor Mangat, City Council, Honorable City Attorney McSalca, and Deputy Manager Davis. I just wanted to talk to you quickly tonight about the Vision Zero Action Plan you're going to be looking at, getting a presentation on. I was a planning commission liaison on that for the past three or four months. And I just want to say that I was incredibly impressed with what was produced out of this, the level of detail, the research that was done, and statistical analysis, et cetera. And the recommendations for Lafayette are- And the recommendations for Lafayette are quite substantial, and I think all very solid. And so, kudos out to older county for pulling this all together, since there was a number of municipalities that they did as part of this project. The only thing is that the last meeting, I kind of asked, I noticed that some of the things, recommendations, said that yes, Lafayette was doing these, and a number said no. And I was kind of curious, and I said, well, what is kind of holding up, you know, some of these other things being done, since there are safety issues? And they said, oh, it's a budget issue. So, I would just say, I hope that you will look at these recommendations, and maybe if you can budget more of them, because again, bottom line, these are all safety issues, and that's kind of our main goal above everything else. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Leo Baucher, and please correct me on how to pronounce your last name.
Boehner.
Bill Boehn.
Yes. Thank you, I'm so honored to be surrounded by Lafayette pioneers. I've lived in Colorado for twenty-five years, and spent some time working, living, spending money, passing through this town, and never had one problem. As a result, I'm having a twenty-fifth year anniversary backyard sale at my house at 833 Baker Street in Longmont, and everything is at nineteen forty-nine prices, every item is a quarter. I'm going to leave this with the city clerk. All of the city employees of this town is invited. But I have some shocking news regarding the city of Longmont. Last Monday, I walked to the USPS and discovered sloppily painted and pink colored spray hot, hot pink colored spray paint on my front sidewalk and front curb. I feared that the symbols were anti-queer, anti-Semitic, or satanic. I said to myself, it's vandals or a joke, I did not want to rush to judgment. So I walked through the corner four houses down and discovered more sloppily painted stray hot pink marks. Avoiding a hasty conclusion, I would walk on the other side of the street upon my return. Surely Longmont would splurge five dollars on door hangers, or pay a programmer fifty bucks to post a notice on a website to inform us of their activities. Well, the other side of the street had no markings, so I became fearful. I researched and discovered that hot pink is the standard symbol color for temporary property lines. I realized then that the city of Longmont revandals were again antagonizing, provoking, and harassing me. Why would Longmont not follow protocol and utilize non-standard and potentially misleading colors and symbols? When my garage was vandalized a few years ago, I followed police recommendations and temporarily covered the paint and symbols. I did the same on this occasion. Two days later, I received a message from the Longmont Planning Commission. Instead of explaining the botched patch concrete work and the meaning of pink paint and unrecognizable symbols, in the same line of Longmont's ongoing false and frivolous actions, they leave a message accusing me of vandalism. As week progressed, I began to see and take pictures of trucks and stray hot pink markings sloppily painted all over the streets. That's how I understood the so-called improvements. The concrete workers eventually skipped my house like the angel of death. In retrospect, I have made the following conclusive observations that au contraire, the city of Longmont is guilty of vandalism. One, the concrete patchwork looks horrific and has devalued the properties on the street. The sidewalks and curbs are embarrassing, miscolored, sporadic, and mismatched. It's not an improvement. Concrete is historically the cheapest and least biologically safe construction material in the Milky Way. Three, the city of Longmont cannot only afford to give proper construction notice to Baker Street residents, it also can afford worthwhile improvements. When I have an extra million, I'm going to put cobblestones in front of my house and others. The entire purpose of the pink painting, misleading PR, shoddy and incomplete work, is to devalue our properties. And finally, the planning commission has personal financial interests in the concrete industry, which is the driving force behind, excuse my French, their crap work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any more in-person speaker forms. Are there any other members of the public in person that wish to speak? Okay. I do see we have a couple callers, so we'll go to them for their five minutes. We'll begin with caller with the phone number ending in 533. Caller with the phone number ending in 533, talking is now permitted, and you may speak when you are ready.
Hi, this is Julie Pillar, and I live at 301 East Geneseo Street, and I apologize for not being there in person, but I wanted to add my voice to support the plaque language for Frank Archuleta and Doug Conroe. They provided this plaque language two years ago in 2023, and it's clear, true, and important, I think, to highlight the wrongs of the past so that we won't repeat them and we can heal. So please listen to the really important historians who've done all this work, presented language, and all of their friends and neighbors who want to see this finally at the Lafayette Cemetery. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have a caller with a phone number ending in 757. Caller with a phone number ending in 757, talking is now permitted, and you may speak.
Hello?
Hey, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Christopher, I live in, on Sioux Street, and I just wanted to say it was great meeting you at the protest on Saturday. Kind of a lackluster crowd, but we, you know, we showed up. I am calling again to have you people really think about a moratorium on building in this town, and start focusing more on infrastructure, the roads, and the amount of potholes we have on baseline and 111 and other roads throughout this town. They really need their attention, because we just need it. It's time we fixed our roads instead of continually build these new places that we have to build more to. Developers do not care about us or this town, they just care about their pockets. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Chris. And can you give us your last name, too, for the record? I think, okay, no worries. Finally, we have a caller with the phone number ending in 424. Caller with phone number ending in 424, if you'd like to speak during this time, talking is now permitted, and you may speak.
Whoops. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, okay, I am David Semano, grandson of Salvador Semano, who died 5 May 1929, and was buried in the segregated portion of Lafayette Cemetery. Like my grandfather, one hundred years ago, I am addressing the mayor and its council. My father talked often to the mayor, and he represented the Hispanics, but also other coal miners. I agree with the language that Frank Archuleta has suggested be placed at the Lafayette Cemetery. I represent the Semanos, the Esbelitas, the Tiras, the Acustas, and other families that were ran out of town or were discriminated against. These were my ancestors, my fathers, my uncles, and my aunts. To every massacre, there is a survivor. You cannot hide the truth. We will reveal the truth and expose the lies in a very peaceful manner. Every massacre has a survivor, first survivor. The Hennig Mortuary map, and by survivors, I'm not talking about the dead, I'm just talking about the truth. The truth will always be there, and it can be brought up at a later time through different means. The Hennig Mortuary map that I presented to the city council along with Salvador Semano's burial record, which the city refused to recognize, Frank Archuleta fortunately took the map and historical records and proved the map to be authentic. I don't think the city council has yet authenticated the map. Second survivor, Martha Espinoza, who is an angel that stood watch over the desecrated graves for his stone, was the first to be recognized on the map. Oddly, this is Frank Archuleta's aunt. The story and history goes deeper than most will ever know. Third survivor, Catholic records, newspaper articles, ancestors, and photos that tell the story of the discrimination of Lafayette. The KKK did not divide Lafayette, it united it. The people of Lafayette united under the KKK in their discrimination. There were thousands of KK members that marched through the streets and rose fifteen-to-twenty foot crosses up on the hilltops above the Hispanic workers. There was a segregated school, which I presented a photo to the council that my ancestors went to, to include my aunts and uncles, and my father. A segregated swimming pool, which Henry Mathias stated should be placed under the fire department so as long as not to allow the Mexicans in. This is stated by Henry Mathias. Stores that had signs that said, no Mexicans allowed. Mexicans that were enslaved and beaten until they could not even walk, forced to work in the coal mines, most of their earnings taken from them. Again, they were enslaved, they got very little pay, and what little pay they got was taken from them, and they're beaten, and they're brought in from Mexico. The lie, here's the lie. Mexican coal miners could not afford a plot in the proper of the cemetery. My grandfather, my uncle, and other Hispanics owned homes in downtown Lafayette. My grandfather's father owned a home in Boulder. They had the money for a plot in the proper position of the cemetery, but were denied it and were forced to be buried in what is now they call Potter's Field. Henry Mathias's name is on my grandfather's death certificate, believe it or not. He was a clerk recorder. To say that during that time, when Henry Mathias was connected to the clerk's office, fire department, and to the graveyard, and that there was no discrimination at the graveyard in the language being used by historians, that it was a peaceful and loving place to bury everybody's remains in the graveyard, but the Mexicans couldn't afford to be buried in the proper portion of the graveyard, is a lie, ultimate lie. All this discrimination, and the only place that didn't discriminate was the graveyard? I don't think so. The city has still yet failed to show me the proper receipts of the Hennig Mortuary plots. So my grandfather was buried in this plot area. Your maps show that Henry, or that the Hennig Mortuary owned this area. But then the city went and continued to bury people on this area that was not theirs. I've asked the city to produce a receipt for these plots, but yet they haven't. I'm special forces retired, I can read maps, I can make maps. I can take you to that graveyard, and I can stand there and show you things that you've never seen before. I can show you where the old trails went, where the old sidewalks went, I can see where they were laid in there, I can see it on the planet, on the earth itself. The city has yet to produce, by federal law, that a map be produced that shows the exact burial locations. The map that you have is not a map, it's a false representation of a map.
Mr. Semano, thank you so much for calling in. You are at your five minutes, but we were able to hear all of your comments.
I have one last thing. Last thing I want to say is, my ancestors did talk about the KKK, and their grandchildren still profess, they're in California now because they ran out, they still profess and talk about how that their parents and their grandparents talked about the KKK that was in Lafayette. And I do appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
All right. Thank you all so much for public input. I'm not seeing any more in-person speakers or online callers, so with that, we will close public input and move forward with our consent agenda for tonight. We have the following items, including item A, June 3, 2025, city council mini minutes, item B, resolution number 2025-34, approving intergovernmental agreement between the city of Lafayette and the city and county of Broomfield, Boulder County, the cities of Boulder, Longmont, and Lewisville, and the towns of Lyons and Superior concerning the Home Investment Partnership Program. Item C, items pertaining to the site plan and architectural review compliance at 1383 Horizon Avenue and 1387 Horizon Avenue, including resolution 1, 2025-35, extending the deadline for compliance with the conditions in resolution number 2024-43 pertaining to the approval of the site plan, and architectural review for Lot 15 Vista Business Park, and resolution number 2, 2025-36, extending the deadline for compliance with conditions in resolution to 2024-52 pertaining to the approval of the site plan and architectural review for Lot 16 Vista Business Park until July 15, 2025. And we have item D, contract with Network Infrastructure Construction Company, Co-Built Conduit Construction. Are there any items the council would like to pull? Councillor Sampson?
I'd like to pull item B, the IGA for the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Any other items to be pulled? No, can we get a motion for the ballot, please?
I move to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Second, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously, let's go to item B, councillor Sampson.
So, first of all, I want to say I'm in favor of us joining this. I don't want to hold it up, because I know the deadline is actually, has to be to HUD by the end of the month, but I have lots of questions on this that are, just because I don't see them in here. So first one is more of a request than a question. I'm hoping staff can get the consolidated plan for the Home Investment Partnership, it's currently not on. I know that typically, when it's in the works, what the lead agencies do is stick something on there to, in the link, and the link goes to something that's not a consolidated plan. So I know they're doing it as a holding spot, but they should have a draft plan that they could share with us, because that specifically tells us what we can use home funds on. So now, jumps into the question. So, the question is, with the Boulder-Broomfield partnership, it rotates, and we're in, these are running for three-year terms. Who is, who's receiving the funds in this first year?
Looking through the IGA, so if you can give me just, oh, sorry, Phil Pleisler, City's Planning and Building Department, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Just one moment, towards the end of the IGA, the second to last page, it lays out year one, one and five, so city of Boulder would be underneath the umbrella of the Boulder County allocation, and that would be years two and six.
Yeah, but where are we at now? So, we're in a, we have a program year that's going to be starting October 1st for this. Who's getting it for the October 1st through September 30th? Do you know?
I've assumed that would be year one, and that would be city of Longmont.
Okay, so we're thinking that's Longmont, and I'm reading four, that it rotates Boulder, then Longmont, then Boulder County, then city and county of Broomfield, or am I reading that incorrectly?
Slightly different, so it rotates between the city of Boulder, the city of Longmont, both their housing authorities in Boulder County. City and county of Broomfield gets an annual allocation separate from that for one of their tenant programs.
Okay. So we wouldn't get it till the third year?
The second and the sixth year.
Oh, the second, so we would actually get it October of 2026, so next year.
I believe so, my understanding.
Okay. Great, that answers that. And I actually got the program, let's see, what was the other one that I have on here? Oh, another question, matching funds, the way that this reads in this IGA, it says both the lead agency, so city Boulder, and then whoever's Oh, another question, matching funds, the way that this reads in this IGA, it says both, the lead agency, so City Boulder, and then whoever's receiving the funds would be responsible for a match. So there's a 25% match for the, the project, whoever's doing a project. Is that a required match by the, you know, by the locality, or how does, how does our lead agency work that?
My understanding would be in the years either where it's Boulder County's allocation period, or if another city didn't use their allocation and there was funding to Lafayette specifically, um, we would likely support a Boulder County Housing Authority project, and so they would handle the finances and we would have to sort through the matching funds and whatnot. If the city had the capacity and the expertise to actually be the lead in that and use these funds, then we would be probably responsible for that matching. But, and I don't, it's my understanding that, um, just by there being a project in the, um, in Lafayette through this program, it wouldn't necessarily fall on us as the City of Lafayette, um, to do matching funds for a county project.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. So, basically, the lead agency in this case is not necessarily requiring us to come in and match, it might be a combination of all sorts of different things that come from the county as well as Lafayette.
It might be a close collaboration like we've seen with WOBE.
Okay, okay, so that answers that. Now, there's only one other thing I'm going to say, and this is really kind of weird, only because I have experience with this. I think there's something wrong in the IGA because they're talking about the three federal fiscal years, which I know HUD wants in here, and it, that overlaps with the program years. The problem is, um, that when I read through this, um, I think they may have shut off the last fiscal, I think they, they shut off the third year of the term. Um, and I could be wrong. So, what I'm going to propose, because I've had this, this has happened before and it gets sent back from HUD, I was going to propose that we approve this, um, with the idea that if it gets sent back from HUD with the, with the statement that you're missing one of the years in here, that, that we give staff, we approve that staff can make that change without coming back. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. We did anticipate bringing this forward in a few months, but Boulder County needed it more immediately, more immediately than that, so, I mean, in that case as well, if, if we can also check with them and make sure that everything is as it needs to be, and if we have to make changes even in the nearer term, then we could do that, knowing that we have your approval.
Right, because, yeah, because that's what I'm worried about, is what happens is we all go through the signing, and then it gets turned in from the lead agency into HUD, HUD does a review, and they'll kick it back if the language is incorrect, and sometimes it's just something weird. So, I'm wondering, city attorney, is the wording for something like that administrative language, or how would I say, "We'd like to approve this," and with the understanding that if anything changes in it, I don't know, an administrative?
Yes, I would, I would say in your motion, you could provide that, uh, staff can make any changes to administrative language, um, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney's office. And if there's anything material that we believe we need to bring back to you as counsel, we will do that anyway, regardless of your authorization, but that authorization to be able to make changes to administrative language in the agreement would give us the flexibility to agree to those, um, changes that could potentially come back from HUD, which I've also seen with other municipalities, so thank you for asking for that. But I think that will give us what we need. So, as long as it's, uh, administrative language and subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney's office, we should be covered.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to make, if nobody else has a question?
Can I just ask, um, do we, I'd like to make sure that our planner, Kleisler, and that our city attorney have clarity around what specifically we need to flag? What area, is there a specific area that you want us to look at? Um, can you tell us exactly what?
What I was talking about is the year, so it's a weird thing because it's the, they have federal fiscal years in there, and then it says three-year terms, and then you've got program years which overlap, so, yeah. And so it says, it basically identifies two fiscal years, and that skips the third in the language. I think, you can ask about that, but I also think HUD will come back and make adjustments if needed.
Just wanted to make sure we were clear on what concern was.
Yes, and I, I do feel like I have adequate direction, and I can back up staff with that on what Counselor Sampson's concerns are.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You, you can let HUD do their job if you want. I just wanted to, I just want to make sure you, you as staff can do what you need to do.
Sure.
Okay, so, I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lafayette and the City and County of Broomfield, Boulder County, the cities of Boulder, Longmont, Lewisville, and the towns of Lyons and Superior concerning the Home Investment Partnership Program, and allow staff to make changes, um, administrative changes to the language, subject to form by the city attorney.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Counselor Sampson. All right, that wraps up consent agenda, which brings us to proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight regarding Juneteenth, Independence Day, for June 19th, 2025. Counselor Barnes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, this proclamation is for Juneteenth, Independence Day, June 19th, 2025. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate territories free, and whereas news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, and in particular the southern and southwestern states for more than two, two and a half years. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans, and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolition of slavery, slavery in the United States and the emancipation of African-American slaves throughout the Confederate South, and whereas the United States and the House of Representatives passed a resolution in 1987 to honor and recognize Juneteenth, Independence Day, and whereas more than 150 years of the abolition of slavery in the United States, uh, after, more than 150 years after the abolition of slavery in the United States, there are still acts of violence, prejudice, and discrimination against people of color every day, and whereas this city does not tolerate acts of racism, oppression, intimidation, harassment, prejudice, or racial profiling towards another individual, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Lafayette do hereby declare June 19th, 2025 to be the Juneteenth, Independence Day. We encourage all residents to commit to supporting a community of diversity and inclusiveness through our actions and our words and our policies. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on that. Any comments or discussion regarding this proclamation? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add, there is, and I don't know how well you're concerned, but there is a flag commemorating Juneteenth. It has the colors red, white, and blue, because those are the colors of the United States. The star in the middle represents the state of Texas, the star burst represents all of the other states and freedom, and the curve that you see along there represents the horizon as we move forward, uh, to a greater future. So there is a meaning behind the, the flag when you see it, and, uh, if I read correctly, one of the interesting facts about Juneteenth and abolition and the freeing, freeing of the Africans who were enslaved here, is that President Abraham Lincoln, little known fact, and maybe your mayor can confirm, or if you've heard this, is that he initially was thinking of sending those Africans to the African country of Liberia, and then changed his mind when he realized that would be a bad idea. And thank goodness he did, uh, we are still here, built an incredible history, and, uh, I would like to let everyone know that we are working with the City of Longmont in an agreement to, um, join them in celebrating Juneteenth. This year it will be, again, this is the third year in Longmont at Roosevelt Park. I will be there in, uh, with support from the Arts and Cultural Resources Department, so if you show up there, you'll see me with the Lafayette tent, and at some point, we hope to, uh, collaborate with the City of Longmont and share a, uh, Juneteenth activity right here in, um, in Lafayette. So if you want more information about that, there's band, it's actually a very family-oriented activity, there will be a big Juneteenth celebration in Denver, of course, and, uh, yeah, I believe in Boulder, so I just wanted to let you know that there is, if you're looking for something for your children, I will have, um, sheets commemorating Juneteenth, the children can color, and I may or may not have some science demos that are intriguing at the booth. So, uh, yeah, it starts at 3:00 PM, it ends at 7:00 PM, there will be lots of speakers, uh, and the band and music, and incredible conversation, so, thank you for allowing me to read the proclamation, um, and come join us at Juneteenth.
Thank you so much for that. Any other votes? All right, we do have a motion and a second on that proclamation. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, uh, that proclamation passes unanimously, thank you. All right, we are on to presentations for tonight. We have, uh, a few, starting with item F, this is the Vision Zero Action Plan, I'll come on up, and we have, uh, we have a discussion tonight on some of the updates on that, and so, I look forward to having that discussion because, you know, this is a, a topic that we've been in talks about for, for quite some time now, and so it's great to see, um, some updates on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mic on?
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, um, we're here tonight to talk about the draft of the Vision Zero Action Plan. I'm here tonight with Jeff Arthur, Director of Public Works, Leslie Yui, the Engineering and CIP Division Manager, and Ray Stuppan, a Transportation Safety Engineer with Y2K. Uh, tonight we'll be covering, um, we won't be covering the full action reports, since we'll focus just on sort of the, um, a brief summary of what we talked about at the last workshop, and then the rest of the work that we've done to date. Uh, that will cover the prioritization process, the implementation plan, uh, the outreach that we've done on the draft plan, and the next steps. So, introduction, we started this project, um, in May of last year. The initial, um, six months or so were data analysis and a Phase One of the public outreach. We came to council in October of '24 for our first workshop, and then we did a second round of outreach in the winter of last year, and then did some strategy identification and project prioritization, and we came to you all in for a workshop in March. And then we've been working on the implementation plan, uh, and the draft document, and we're here tonight to present those. And we will be, we plan to be back, uh, in July for adoption. The prioritization process, this was basically the result of the last workshop that we had. 50% of our prioritization weighting was past crash, crash history, and then to account for that proactive, where we expect, um, crashes to occur in the future where they have a high probability, we have that risk, um, category, which covers multimodal facilities and the presence of vulnerable road users, um, vehicle speed, roadway geometry, and lighting, things like that. And then 20% is equity, um, and the risk was, um, 50% crash data-driven and 50% public outreach from Phase Two weighted, so 10 and 10, each 10% for one of those. And then the equity is a combination of five, four different sources, um, Colorado and Virus Green, the CDC Social Vulnerability Index, US DOT Equitable Transportation Community Index, um, and concentration of low-wage jobs from Census Longmont. And then 10% was our, um, prioritize corridors from the multimodal transportation. Here are the prioritization results, um, the darker red colors are the higher prioritized, higher prioritization corridors, and as you get to the yellows and then to greens and blues, you're lower priority. Uh, you can see that most of the priority corridors are larger roadways like Baseline, South Boulder Road, um, public road, and exempla. Uh, here's the list of the top 10 prioritized corridors, uh, you can see the top two are on South Boulder Road, one on the east side and the other on the west, um, and then Baseline and North Public Road to follow that. We had scoped out, uh, creating concept plans for about two miles, uh, so we made sure that the first two were covered, and then because that third segment was such a long segment, we, um, moved down to North Public Road and created a concept plan after we talked to CDOT and decided that would probably be a better separate project since that overlaps with the state highway. Uh, so those concept plans are in the, um, the workshop, the meeting packet. And then the implementation plan, um, we previously went over the strategy, the high-value strategies and actions workshop that we did, and there was a fair amount of public outreach in the winter, the Phase Two outreach for this. The highest values that came out of that prioritization process are on the screen, the left side is infrastructure improvements, and the right side is non-infrastructure improvements. Um, so the top two highest priorities were signalized intersection-based, um, around improving left turn protection and indications, and then installing backplates with retroreflective orders, um, signal timing and, um, prioritizing, uh, slower speeds on major roadways was in there, and then next was crosswalk visibility enhancements, uh, and then the non-infrastructure were primarily around, um, speeding reduction, so targeted, targeted educational campaigns about roadway safety, driveway standard improvements, and surge enforcement operations in coordination of PD. And then our near-term priorities, um, the top priority is, um, creating our crash data dash, our crash database, um, there are a fair amount of the strategies and actions that are collision-based, so we need the ability to, um, analyze intersections, um, things like protected left turns, we likely wouldn't do without, um, a history of collisions, so, um, that's one example, removing parking near intersections, things like that. And then because signal enhancements were the top two priorities, um, there were a fair amount of other strategies and actions that were fairly easy to implement, so we will likely group strategies and actions that are lower on the list, things like leading pedestrian intervals, um, clearance time, updating clearance times, things like that, we'll likely incorporate those when we're making other improvements on signalized intersections in the city. And then we'll work on setting up policies and procedures for things like crossing enhancements, and getting ready to sort of hit that next tier of improvements as we can complete these. And then implementation goes into sort of three separate buckets. Um, we do have some funded safety initiatives, uh, we were lucky enough to be awarded a Dr. Cog Transportation Improvement Program Grant for South Boulder Road, so we're able to progress the design, um, of two, the top two, um, priority segments, uh, with that project on South Boulder Road. And then we will start pursuing, um, grants in order on, of that prioritized order as they come available. Um, if there is something further down the list that we were able to, that we had a good grant opportunity, we wouldn't, we would go for it, even though it was maybe further down the list. And then opportunistic implementation, uh, we've talked about this a fair amount in terms of the multimodal transportation plan, but that idea of when we touch something, improve it at that time, um, so with our annual concrete paving programs, with our annual signal programs, um, we'll be implementing these strategies and actions. Um, and the draft plan was out for three weeks, um, started in May and ended the survey and outreach ended yesterday. There were a total of 34 responses as of yesterday, uh, highest representation was 10 responses from the area between 287 and 75th and South Boulder and Baseline, uh, and residents were asked if they felt that the plan would be effective in preventing roadmap to achieve Vision Zero with a score between zero and 100. There were not too many, um, trends in the data, other than people asking for, um, speaking in favor or in opposition to specific actions, or, um, requesting very specific projects be included in prioritizing the project. and prioritized in the project. And then next steps, as I stated earlier, the, after getting feedback on the plan tonight, we will take the plan and finalize it and then bring it back for adoption, ideally in July. And then questions?
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. Yeah, we'll first open up to questions from council. Are any other comments? Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, I apologize if I missed this, but when the traffic, the education programs that we're thinking about, would that include like education for people riding bicycles in the city? Is that included?
Yeah, I don't know that we've, we haven't come up with a plan specifically to say we're going to create this bicycle specific plan, but the idea would be to highlight trends. So how, for example, most of our bicycle collisions are people riding against traffic on the, on their left, on the car's right side of the road. So doing things like that. We're also working with EVSD in Louisville and doing some potential safety analysis with Centaurus. And we're trying to coordinate with Boulder County on pushing out, like coordinating, pushing out safety measures that apply to both of us.
Yeah, that would be great. I just think some basics like how to signal on a bike. If you're in a big group of cyclists, you know, how to ride through the city in a safe way. So yeah, if there's anything, I mean, not, not a whole plan, the education plan, but some things to know if you're riding your bike on the city, not on the sidewalk, yes, on a multi-use path. Do not ride on the incorrect part of the road. And I did have the chance to, for the first time, attend the bike rodeo on the weekend. So I'm really impressed with our officers being able to use bikes as police vehicles and getting out there. I think there's just that one more piece is we help people understand how they can continue to ride safely. I see some things that make me cringe. So I think it would be nice to have something to refer to and say like, by the way, ride on the right side of the road. When I see children doing that too, my son included. So I have to do that. So yeah, just wanted to see if we could include some guidance for people when they're riding their bikes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm jumping into just, I did check the way that that strategy is phrased. And we do say explicitly targeted education campaigns for drivers about ped bikes and then also ped bikes to learn about those things. So we have both, both those types of education efforts identified. Thank you.
Okay, I'm checking out. Thank you. Other questions or comments from council?
I'll just, sorry, we're going to add someone. I was, I'll just quickly add like, I don't know if this is like the appropriate place to add this kind, this kind of information, whether it's part of the Vision Zero Action Plan or a larger, different conversation like citywide. But like, I just think it's important for us to continue to be transparent and informative on how, when folks come to us on city council or to city staff regarding traffic concerns that they have within their neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods don't fall under the high priority list because other, as we've seen through the data, you know, there are certain intersections within the city that are a lot more dangerous statistically than others. However, do I think it's important for, because I feel like a lot of times folks get lost or confused or feel unheard when they have traffic concerns and the city isn't as quickly to respond, but rightfully so, right? Because we have like serious injuries and deaths that occur in other folk, and in certain places more than others. And so just like being transparent or just upfront about that process on how it works. When folks have complaints, when they come to us at public comment, when they come to us through our emails, hey, what can you do about the speed here? What can you do about the traffic here? We need to be able to respond to them with a straightforward process saying, hey, here's where we are right now in our, in our planning interview process when it comes to like updates to any of these traffic mitigation techniques that we may have certain places. Here's where, you know, when we're going to get to your street and around, give them approximation of a timeline or something along those lines. And I know it's not like something we can just whip up tomorrow, but it's just something to consider, you know, over the next few years as we develop these types of plans is how can we clearly give that feedback to the community members of when and where they can be served in? If not, why not? So I just think, I just think, you know, we just need to be more upfront about that. But anyways, that's all I had. If there aren't any other comments or questions, we sincerely appreciate you presenting tonight and for bringing that presentation together and look forward to future conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had two more presentations tonight. I wanted to see if it would be okay from, from my fellow counselors to begin the next presentation actually with item H, the Sister City Partnership, so we can make sure we have enough time. We know we have our guests from our nonprofit here. And I do anticipate this conversation being a bit shorter than the other one. And so I want to make sure that they have enough time to get their presentation up and ready. And that way we can get through this one and then get to item G. Would that be okay with council? Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll get to item H. This is a Sister City Partnership. We have, as I, as I've mentioned previously, we have engaged into a couple, engaged with a couple international communities in regards to developing a partnership. But the one that's really risen to the top has been a partnership with Iquitos, Peru, alongside with the nonprofit One Voice for Change. And One Voice for Change will be responsible for facilitating the Sister City Partnership and would also be kind of that liaison to the community in Peru. And so I've invited Felicity, who is the Executive Director of One Voice for Change. I believe some members of her board are here as well. And to discuss the nonprofit, she did distribute some documents. So each counselor should have a couple of documents regarding this that they can look through. She also is very organized and brought forward her nonprofit's bylaws and board structure and all that information is available to us. And so the hope of this conversation is for Felicity to describe more about her nonprofit as well as the work she's done across the world. And to, at the end, you know, hopefully we can get a consensus to commit to a Sister City Partnership with Iquitos, Peru, which would essentially, the next steps would be to afford a proclamation, but we can get to that, we can get more into that conversation later. I do want to turn the floor over to Felicity so she can tell you more about her nonprofit and the work that they've done.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Felicity Minch. I'm the Executive Director of the Lafayette nonprofit, One Voice for Change. Tonight, I'm here to share our vision, our experience and our passion for demonstrating that we are uniquely positioned to lead the Sister City Initiative between Lafayette and Iquitos, Peru. One Voice for Change brings equal learning opportunities to young people by creating worldwide partnerships that inspire learning and global citizenship. Our approach to giving voice to vision is unique because we focus on facilitating partnerships that connect learners, teachers, mentors and professionals. Together, we provide customized support for collaborative projects tailored to meet the specific needs of the participants. And of all our projects, it was the culture, the people and the beauty of Peru that inspired us to pursue our dream of forming a sister city with Iquitos. And the best way to understand a culture is to, I hope I can hit play. Oops.
Is that, is that a video? Is this a video?
I was going to play something on the video.
Alex, do you mind?
I think if you just maybe click it on the screen.
Right. Try to click in the center of the slide.
Oh, thank you. I just need to bring back that. I need to hit play.
It doesn't appear.
Okay.
That there's a link in there, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. All right. Sorry, I was going to play the song El Condor Pasa, which is a Peruvian song. I was going to play a few seconds of it. So it didn't work. But I'd like to go over a little bit about Iquitos, Peru, because most people don't know where it is. It is the largest city in the Peruvian Amazon, situated in the northeastern region of Peru. It has a population of 505,000. It is the largest city in the world that cannot be reached by road. The only way to get to Iquitos is by plane or boat. Iquitos is situated at the confluence of the Amazon River, Nane and Ateya Rivers, where the port of Iquitos serves as a hub for trade, tourism and industry, supporting the local I would like to introduce you to Mayor Vladimir Chong Rios, there on the left, and Cesar Adrian Ojeda Flores, the Director of Amazon Youth. And I would like to let you know that you have information in front of you about Cesar. Let me take a moment to highlight some of the initiatives and projects that One Voice for Change has created. Our work in Mexico, we began in 2018 before we were a nonprofit. One Voice for Change, along with concert guitarist Alfredo Murrow, worked with students and teachers at El Colegio Patria School in Las Varas, Mexico. The students loved the guitar and also shared their passion for art. In Chacala, the students had an unforgettable experience performing with Alfredo Murrow in concert. We moved on to the country of Belize. And in Belize, our vision and projects expanded. We made an impact by donating 12 guitars and coordinating guitar lessons for students in Belmapan and Belize City, providing many students with the opportunity to receive music lessons. We continue to work on empowering teachers and students, facilitating projects such as Martian Greenhouse, teaching a class in project management and giving students a voice in discussing solutions for our educational system. In 2022, our work in Peru began and we donated 16 A3 SAT CubeSat emulator kits developed by STEM educator John Moore, which we see, who we see. A CubeSat is a small satellite about the size of a Rubik's Cube. And these small satellites are used to perform experiments or take pictures from space. The project led by One Voice for Change in partnership with SteamWorld, Entertronic and major Peruvian organizations aims to build students' technical and teamwork skills through steam and space technology. 16 teams, including students, teachers and mentors from schools and universities, are working together to solve real world problems with strong support from national and international In Iquitos, students, teachers and families gather to witness the test launch of the first CubeSat, an unforgettable moment of shared achievement. Students developed essential skills, including collaboration skills, creativity, problem solving, effective communication and resilience. What you're seeing in front of you is just a large poster giving all the, all the towns throughout Peru that we've worked with, that where the CubeSats have been sent. There are schools, Paola Wong from SteamWorld picked 16 schools throughout Peru to build CubeSats and have science projects. So thank you. Thank you. The gratitude shown by these students and teachers and families will stay with us forever. We should never forget that each action we take can create a ripple effect, transforming lives in ways we may never fully know. Then there's the Kennedy Space Center. We raised money for one of the teachers, a student and the director, Paola Wong, to present at the Kennedy Space Center. And imagine this, imagine never ever having been on an airplane. And then suddenly you're on a plane, landing in Orlando from Lima and going to the Kennedy Space Center to present. That's what happened with this teacher and student. They had never been in an airplane. They had never flown. So it was incredible. In 2024, we, we brought them to the Kennedy Space Center to present their work. This opportunity forever changed 16-year-old Nadeline's life. She now dreams of going to college to study science. Relationships play a powerful and critical role in a young person's life. From aerospace engineer Bruce Davis sharing his knowledge with students in Peru and in Uruguay today, just before this meeting, I was speaking with Uruguay, to Air Force cadets mentoring students on CubeSat and robotic projects, One Voice for Change keeps those connections strong. Recipes for cultural connection. When a student at Legacy High School proposed sharing her grandmother's recipes with students in Peru, we listened. Students in both countries came together on Zoom to present recipes that celebrated their heritage, gaining a whole new perspective on each other's cultures. We also do a program called Career Landscapes on YouTube. High school students told us that they wished they had more information about various careers. One Voice for Change started a YouTube channel where we speak with professionals from across a wide range of fields to help students understand and navigate their career choices. These videos empower students with real world knowledge and practical information. In closing, One Voice for Change is positioned to lead a Sister City Partnership with Iquitos, Peru. Our organization has a proven track record of international collaboration, both virtually and in person, and has already established meaningful relationships with teachers and students in Iquitos. We are committed to accountability and measurable outcomes, ensuring that our efforts translate into real benefits for both communities. A Sister City Partnership with Iquitos would unlock powerful opportunities for both Lafayette and Iquitos. Together, we can facilitate student and teacher exchanges. We can participate in joint projects and research, share educational resources and broaden our perspectives as we navigate the new era of artificial intelligence. Culturally, this partnership will allow us to explore and appreciate each other's values, traditions and ways of life, broadening our perspectives and deepening our global awareness. Both cities share a strong commitment to sustainability, which is vital to the well-being of our residents. And like Lafayette, Iquitos shares a deep appreciation for the arts. Through art, music, crafts or any other form of artistic expression, we celebrate diversity and connect with each other and our shared humanity. By backing this partnership, Lafayette will build stronger ties around the world and stand out as a leader in international collaboration and community development. We are at our best when we create the future with intent. I ask you to please consider forming a Sister City Partnership between Lafayette and Iquitos. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Felicity. So I think it's important, I really wanted to bring Felicity in because as we've discussed previously on this topic, the Sister City relationship will really be administered by the nonprofit of One Voice for Change as well as the Peru-based nonprofit, Amazon Youth.
Yes.
And so they will be communicating with Mayor Chong in Iquitos. They'll be discussing. They'll be discussing their needs and then sharing it with Felicity at One Voice for Change, and they'll kind of interact back and forth. The city of Lafayette will be there as a support system and to obviously formalize the relationship. And so, but first, I wanted to make sure you all have the opportunity to meet Felicity and be familiar with the organization and make sure they are a suitable candidate to facilitate this relationship. So with that, we'll open up to any questions that anyone in council may have for Felicity or her organization.
And our website is onevoiceforchange.org, with the number four, onevoiceforchange.org.
Cass Friedland.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it and all the great work that you're doing. Have you administered a relationship like this before? A sister-city partnership?
No.
Okay, so this would be kind of new.
This is brand-new for us and brand-new for Iquitos. They have never had a sister-city. And Lafayette has never had a sister-city.
So I guess why, you know, the new thing? You know, adding to the bundle, just a good opportunity and wanting to make it happen?
Yeah, Iquitos is an incredible place. And we're doing so much work down there anyway. And I think we could be of real benefit to them, and I think they could be benefit to us, too. So it's very intriguing, and I would love to do a sister-city relationship with them.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions? Felicity, your nonprofit is based here in Lafayette, correct?
Yes.
And you have a board of directors, executive director as well?
Yes.
And any employees, any staff?
No.
And are you, is your nonprofit sustainable financially? Do you feel like you're in a good place?
Yes, yes.
Great. And so we just, you know, you know, and so you've already conducted many trips down there as well yourself?
Mm-hmm.
And have you had the opportunity to work with their youth down there already in Peru?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I met the kids, the teachers. I was at the balloon launch in Iquitos. I was down there in December. We did a benefit. We raised money to help children at Children's Hospital, Lima Children's National Hospital. And we were able to get enough money to give the children about six hundred and seventy hygiene kits. The kits contain soap, shampoo, just basic hygiene kits. And we raised money so that the kids could have hygiene kits. I played guitar. I worked with the crew down there at Children's Hospital. So we do a variety of things to help and connect people, connect students, connect. We work on partnerships and connections. We just work for good.
Thank you. Other questions from council, either for Felicity or, oh, go ahead. Counselor Gaius.
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just wanted to say I love the connection to education and the STEM kits and bringing those to the community. I did have a question about having our youth here in Lafayette connect with the youth in Peru. Could we maybe have a call with the youth advisory board or anything to that effect?
So your question is how we can connect with them?
Is that the possibility?
We usually through Zoom. Yeah, we connect on Zoom if you want to talk to them immediately. Is that your question?
No, I just wanted to find out if there was that possibility of students meeting other students.
I want the kids here to meet the kids down there and vice versa. So Recipes for Cultural Connection went so well because the kids were just so excited about talking about the recipes, and they videoed themselves making whatever it is they're making, the muffins, the cabbage, the rolls. It was amazing. So yes, I definitely think it would be a huge benefit for students here in Lafayette to have the benefit of meeting the students and maybe working and doing collaborative projects with Peru.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right, so what we're seeking tonight is just consensus or support for me to initiate an official proclamation with Mayor Chong in Iquitos. We've already done the letters of intent, but to official, to formalize the partnership, each city must pass a proclamation. So I know, you know, we've talked about staff time on this. I really just need a little bit of staff support to help formalize and write up that proclamation. Outside of that, once the relationship is established, all the administrative duties will be left to One Voice for Change. So I'm just looking for council support to initiate that proclamation process. And then eventually, there will be a signing ceremony. I don't know what that would look like, to what extent, but I'll have to reach out to some of my connections at Sister Cities International and other groups to see what that may look like. But right now, just looking for support for proclamation, and that proclamation will be voted on by this council. And once that's voted on, that will officially create the sister-city relationship. Yes, Counselor Thompson.
Question for anybody who wants to talk. What is the cost? What are we thinking? You said we've got some staff time, city staff time involved, which is more of an in-kind cost. Is there other costs that One Voice for Change is going to need?
Not, I have not planned that far ahead. I doubt it. No, we're all volunteer. And I work full-time as a musician and guitar teacher. I've been a teacher my entire life. Many years at the university level. I retired and started One Voice for Change. So I, my entire world is music and education, yeah, in form.
And within the proclamation, within those individual clauses, we can ensure, like, it's written in a way where we are primarily exchanging, cultural exchanging, culture exchanges for education, support, and then, you know, see how the relationship grows. But we won't earmark or dedicate a specific funding source or resource in that exchange.
Okay, so it sounds like what you're suggesting, what you're both suggesting is more of a project-by-project type of situation, so.
I think so. I see it as a very collaborative ideas. When someone has an idea, you know, we can all talk about it and see what we can do. So it's just kind of a melting pot. And I would love to have ideas from Peru. I've got plenty of ideas culturally and exchange programs. But yeah, together, we will come up with ideas and then help create the projects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any objections for me to initiate that proclamation? Thank you so much for that support. Thank you to One Voice for Change for being here. And so we'll work on next steps over the next couple of weeks. And then, once that's finalized, we'll come back to council at a later date. Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate it. Okay, so that wraps up item H. And so that brings us back to item G, our final presentation for tonight. This is on the Lafayette Cemetery and Lafayette History Museum Historical Plaque: Recognizing Unmarked Graves. We have our deputy city manager here, Megan Davis, with a presentation to get us started.
He's grabbing cookies for all of us.
Smart.
He might not be, but maybe if he hears us, he will.
That's smart. Give you guys just a little sugar, sugar jump before we get started. All right, I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, mayor and city council. We're here tonight to talk about the memorial plaque recognizing unmarked graves at the city of Lafayette Cemetery. I'm here this evening to share a brief presentation and open the discussion. I also have this evening, with us tonight, Chelsea Peddington-Hahn with the Lafayette Historical, History Museum, and then Lee Campbell-Hale, also with the Lafayette History Museum. She's the chair, and Chelsea is the museum director. And they have been working together with us and other community members through these discussions for the past several years. So tonight, we're going to start by talking a little bit about the background on this issue, and then we'll talk about the purpose, the proposed plaque language and location, and then next steps. So as you know, the Lafayette Cemetery is one of two cemeteries that the city of Lafayette owns. We also have the Coal Creek Cemetery. The city of Lafayette Cemetery is the oldest of the cemeteries. It has been the city of Lafayette Cemetery since eighteen ninety-one. So for many, many years, certainly predating the conversations that we've been having for the past about, you know, five years here. In terms of the most recent background around this discussion, the city council held an initial discussion in two thousand twenty-three about the options for a memorial plaque at the Lafayette Cemetery to honor those who were buried in unmarked graves. In November, following that conversation, the history museum staff presented language for a potential memorial plaque, and council requested that staff continue to work with the history museum and review the available historic information and make a revised recommendation for plaque language. So for the next two years, staff has been working with the Lafayette History Museum and had discussions with state historians and local community members. And that's kind of been ongoing. We've drawn upon any resources that we could. We've talked with those in the community who have done research, a lot of research on their own, and we provided a lot of that information for you in the packet. The city of Lafayette and the Lafayette History Museum entered into an MOU agreement for historical programming and research. As you're all aware, the city of Lafayette does not have any historical staff. We don't have historians on staff, and we don't have any kind of, you know, historical research department. And so the partnership with the history museum has been longstanding in terms of, you know, programming partnerships. They have occupied the museum space that's owned by the city for many years. But this is the first time that we've had kind of a formal agreement that city council reviewed and approved a few months ago. And the Lafayette History Museum recently completed a research review and recommended new language based on that research review of all the research around the Lafayette Cemetery that had been brought forward by various folks and research that they had compiled and recommended new language for the memorial plaque. So after looking at all of the information and having these conversations, this plaque language was intended to recognize the historic Potter's Field. Again, it's a very old cemetery, and so we have a very old Potter's Field and wanted to memorialize and honor the individuals buried in the unmarked graves and that were missing from the cemetery records. Cemeteries are a place of remembrance and mourning, and so the focus of this sign is really a memorial plaque, an interpretive historical sign with more, you know, historical information, contextual information, especially spanning such a large range of history, kin-feeling consistent with kind of the nature and the space of a cemetery. So we wanted this to be, again, that memorial kind of remembrance type of plaque. Other educational initiatives or exhibits that could be more expansive and interpretive in nature could be, could more appropriately expand on the complex history. And so we'll talk a little bit about that as well. So the proposed plaque language for the cemetery site is as follows. Says, "As we visit these hollow grounds to remember, honor, and commemorate our families and friends, we should acknowledge that nearly two hundred women, children, infants, and men, perhaps more, were laid to rest here in unmarked graves. This cemetery, like many others, has a Potter's Field where some were buried under wooden markers now lost to time, while others died far from home, unclaimed. Many lived in poverty or faced prejudice and neglect. Renewed interest and ongoing historical investigations, along with technological advances, have begun to help reveal who, where, and how many lie interred here. Although we cannot right the wrongs of the past, we can begin to atone for them. In this spirit, the city of Lafayette dedicates this plaque to all laid to rest here, to all laid to rest in unmarked graves here." We looked at different options for plaque design, and one that we felt was kind of best suited to the space and the size of the language that we have identified is a sort of bronze-type plaque, like you see here, situated on a rock. And so this is what we're, have been looking at sourcing and proposing for the space. We've talked to park staff about something like this, and it's something we think that we can source and have installed in the location that we had, have identified. It is the same location that had been identified previously. And I'm going to show you that. That's actually in the northeast section. So you can see on this map, you see where the little bubble is. That's where it would be located approximately. And this is basically to the east would be the recreation center. So that's the recreation center parking. So the exit, or exit to the cemetery would be, you know, kind of to the west, so going to the left. I'll go back and talk a little bit about opportunities for additional information. I added this after the plaque design because what we have been thinking is that we could include a small, the small sign that could be updated and changed out with names of unmarked burials that are known to date. There is a list that's been compiled and verified by members of the community and by the museum that can be housed at the Lafayette History Museum and the Lafayette Public Library. And the Lafayette History Museum can provide a landing page for the Lafayette Cemetery Historic Research, as well as the names. And that could be something that wouldn't have to be on the bronze memorial plaque, but could be, you know, sort of next to it. We have similar signs that we have with our art installations. Our Art on the Streets program has something similar that we can change out so people can learn more about those pieces. And so we can have this type of sign with a QR code. And then, if we ever needed to update the page or we wanted to have a different page or, for some reason, the Lafayette, you know, History Museum changed their website or anything, we could easily change that out. So that is an idea that we have to, you know, house additional information and contextual information. And I think there are also other opportunities that could be discussed with community members in the history museum if that's something that they would like to pursue, too. So, next steps. No motion is necessary, but we would like direction from city council regarding next steps with the plaque. If council approves moving forward, we would proceed with creating and installing the memorial plaque. And we welcome questions. And again, both Chelsea and Lee are open to taking questions as well, if you have any.
Great. Well, thank you so much to everyone that's been involved in this process and getting this presentation together. Let's turn to council now for questions or comments regarding this. Counselor Friedland.
So we heard a lot of public comment tonight, you know, in opposition to this language. So I guess my question to you is, how did we, how did we get to this point where these long-term residents are kind of so antagonistic to this language? Any thoughts?
You know, I think, I think there are, there's been research done. We, again, worked with the, you know, history museum to look at the language and, you know, I've reviewed the materials. I'm not a historian, so, I mean, I can't, you know, I can't, you know, verify or, but I think that that we have clear information about records being lost. And if you look at the information that shows the span of records being lost, we have a lot of records that have been lost at the city. And so I think there's, you know, a way of presenting information about the unmarked, you know, unmarked graves. And then there's way of talking about and presenting that information. And so, you know, I think what we're looking at here is a memorial plaque. And I think there's, that is probably a different and perhaps important conversation about record-keeping, which, but I don't know if that's the same conversation about the plaque. So, yeah, and I think there's different feelings about what should be incorporated in this particular, you know, sign. I mean, this conversation's been going on for five years or more.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I, I don't know what, why you think. There are neighbors here who, you know, I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah. Does it give you any pause to the recommendation, hearing the, the amount of, and the long-term residents' concerns?
Um, well, I think this is not a staff recommendation. This is a council decision.
Okay.
I mean, this is your decision. This is not a staff, we're not making this recommendation. We were asked to work with the, you know, with the history museum. I feel the history museum has done, you know, good research. They have worked hard on this and they have, you know, they have done a lot of research as well. And I believe the residents, we have residents in the community who have done a lot of research and who are passionate about this. And they have, they have different lived experiences as well. And so I, I, that's important too. So I, I think we are bringing forward what city council requested, which was that we work with the history museum and they have expertise in this area that we don't have as staff. And so we, you know, are working with them and we value, you know, we feel confident in the work that they've done to, you know, compile the, to look at the research, compile the research, and identify where the research backs up what's in the documentation and what's in the historical data and that we can, you know, really see for ourselves and where there are gaps. And so I think that's what we have gotten from them. So I, yeah, I mean, I think this is what we're bringing forward and, and it's, I can't, it's not our recommendation, but it is what we've been asked from council.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Sampson.
So is there the ability for a family to, I guess what I'm asking is rules? Is there ability for a family that could go around this memorial plaque and do an honor or celebration? I'm thinking of the woman tonight who came and said her young cousins had been buried there because her family had no money to bury those children anywhere else. Could she now maybe have a family get together and do something there? Is there any rules behind it? Do they have, can residents call in and schedule a time? Or how would they go about that if they wanted to do some sort of honoring, their own personal event to honor people and their family?
It would be, I mean, it would certainly be, it is a memorial plaque and it is a cemetery where they could go for observance and they could bring flowers and, you know, they could go for contemplation. They could go as a family. They could go for prayer or whatever type of, you know, you know, memorial they would want to have there within the rules and regulations that we have for the cemetery site.
Okay. So are there any rules that would prevent them from doing something there? Other, I mean, in terms of?
I don't have the cemetery rules in front of me, but yeah.
I don't have the cemetery rules in front of me either, but I would say that the cemetery is open, open to the public and individuals can gather there as long as the gathering doesn't obstruct other people's ability to visit the cemetery and to, you know, and to have their activities there, there wouldn't be any reason for the city to be involved in that. If however, it would be a very large gathering and might have some impact on either the, the roads that lead into the cemetery, the parking, those kinds of issues, we would recommend and encourage residents to reach out to the city to just inquire whether they need some further information or permitting. It's very unlikely though that any permitting would be required, but if, if the size is so great, I would, I would encourage residents to reach out to our city clerk's office and see if there's more that they might need to do. Otherwise, it's, it's open to the public and they can, people are welcome to go there.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions before we get into comments and recommendations?
I have one question. I'm not sure you're the right audience for this, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Maybe the history museum can help us a little bit. So we hear all the public comment, and you said this is a project that's been spanned years now. I was on, I've been on council for a year and a half. I think my first meeting was the one where they came to us and it didn't happen then. So obviously there's been a timeline that spanned out quite, quite a bit of time. So we hear a lot of times, you know, residents don't show up to say what they want to say. Residents don't show up to tell us exactly what it is they want. I think the opposite here, right? This is, this has been, they've been loud, they've been, they've told us exactly what they want. So I guess my question is, I'm looking at the language that was given to us by Frank and Doug, and I'm looking at the language that is being proposed by the Lafayette History Museum. Where did it all go, right? We want to work with our residents. We want to make sure that the history is actually the history, and I understand that. And I read the summary given to us by the doctor, but I want, I want to make sure like to understand, you know, there, there's a lot that's missing, right? That second language, language that's proposed to us by the museum is, in a word, lacking. It seems a little soft to me, the discrimination, the racism aspect, all that stuff has just magically gone away. So I want to know, what was the decision? What was the impetus to actually get rid of that? And I understand that our, we want to acknowledge what happened and we want to do it in a responsible way, but, yeah.
Yeah. Counsel, top of Vega. If you wouldn't mind, I might be able to try to help here. So I think there is a, like, as we've seen throughout multiple discussions, not just this one.
Yeah.
There's a problem in the city when it comes to, like, sourcing information, sourcing history, identifying what's true, what's not, which history has been cross-referenced and which hasn't, taking these opinions and identifying how we take next steps. Like, we talked about it with, as, as mentioned before, we talked about it with the Mary Miller Theater and the name Mary Miller in general, and the Rosalawares Pool, and there's been like several situations where it's very difficult for us to be in our shoes because we don't have, as mentioned, someone on staff that is a dedicated Lafayette historian. We have members of the community that are, but not members of Lafayette staff. And so we're trying to identify a process, and I think we, we sort of did it the last time we were having this type of discussion, where our identified process as decided by council was, okay, let's go to one source, and that source is the Lafayette History Museum. The Lafayette History Museum would then take their time to meet with members of the community, to meet with the Historical Society or other folks that have spent time here in Lafayette, gather that information, check it with the information they have, and then make a recommendation to staff, and then staff passes that information on to us. And so I think throughout this process, the Lafayette History Museum, and feel free to, to jump in, Dr. Lee or Chelsea, if you want to come up here and add to.
Dr. Lee, that's a first.
Yeah. Dr. Lee Campbell, if you want to come up and, and discuss.
Yes, I think so.
And so if you want to come up and discuss the process, if that might help you on, on your discussions with members of the community, if you'd like. But the reason why I wanted to spring that up is because the council did identify this would be our source, because if we don't have that process in place, then it turns into, I believe this person versus someone else believing someone else, and then it's like, it, it's too disorganized. It's, and it's always been that way. And so this was the process that we chose, and so that's how we got to where we are.
So when it was originally coming to council, it came in 2023. And it was some, one or two community members coming up and saying, we want a plaque, and here's some recommended language. If you recall in 2023, a lot of things were happening. And as a result, we decided to say we needed to send this over and make sure we fact find on all sorts, you know? It'd be no different than any person coming up and saying, we really want this plaque. I think that's number one. We really want this, we want a plaque. And then the language was the part that we've had the, you know, it's really been the wrangling on that. And what came in on that first language, it's like the first draft of anything. And so staff said, we really want to get fact finding done by some other historians. And what we've received, and I don't know how much you all have received, the three who weren't on council, there's been a lot of information that has come in from several sides. There's data that we've seen on where, when records were not kept well. We've heard even tonight, somebody said that the reason that their family members were buried there had to do with money, not just one issue. And that's what we've discovered. There's people that are buried there because of the Spanish flu, and at that time, there was nobody there, everybody was sick, so they were trying to just bury people all throughout Colorado. And we've seen that through a newsletter and CML, that there's Potter's Fields throughout. A lot of times Potter's Field were strictly for money. We have, the other element that is being stated here is that there is presumed that there, that there was some sort of discrimination, and that's the reason why people were in Potter's Field. So there's some laying over of perspectives in this thing. And so what I think we've got back here is trying to incorporate all the facts that have come in. And that's where it's come from. And so to explain how that's come in, we only, we, we only heard some things tonight, but I want to encourage anybody that was here, we, I would say the four of us have heard more than what has come tonight. We've heard from several others. So it isn't just, this is one part of the community that spoke or, or one part of the community that had a specific perspective tonight.
Would, would you like to hear more from the historical museum and how they got to this language?
Uh, maybe, if they, if they want to. I'm just saying, a lot of what is largely even by the, by the museum uncontested went away in the second draft of the language, and that's really my question. Just kind of, have we really are working with our residents who are doing the heavy lift here?
Do you mind coming up?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
I'm Lee, Dr. Lee, MI.
Chelsea, the director of the museum.
We were asked to come up with language for the cemetery, and so Chelsea asked me to do the research, and I wanted to do the research because I was interested in it. And I only felt comfortable putting in information that could be verified. And especially for a city space, I think it's important to only put in information that can be verified. That, so that's, that was my basis.
And I think, another thing we came back to looking at, the previous versions of the language, and then when we, the, the language that's been recommended, we sort of started from scratch and said, what can we say without further context? And that's sort of the thing, is lots of parts of the language from Frank and Doug, sort of, we agree with, but there's, there's caveats or there needs to be further context to it. And that's what we went back and forth with, with city and other, you know, members and that sort of thing of, okay, do we want it to be more of a memorial plaque? Should it be interpretive signage? And back and forth, and so as, as Megan mentioned, with it being at the cemetery space, the decision, you know, the direction was, it's going to be more of a memorial plaque and focus on the, the, the people who are buried there and do not have their graves marked. You know, we don't want to focus on the perpetrators, you know, or that sort of thing. We want to focus on who was wronged here and memorialize those names and give families a place where they can come and remember their loved ones because they don't have another space beyond that. But lots of those other, when you start adding in like statistics and like footnotes, like that's no longer a memorial plaque. And so that was what the board and the museum wanted to, to focus on. And again, as I mentioned, they were open to exhibits for the, you know, other, I think there are other forms where we can address more of that larger language. We are in no way trying to deny that the, of the influence of the KKK in Lafayette and Colorado, town clerks who were members of the KKK. We address much of that history in our exhibits at the museum. And so really, this process for us has been, has been focused on finding that balance of what language can go into a plaque and in this format versus other formats that are better to share that.
I guess I'll be really, really, really clear in my question. In the second language, the draft that you gave us, when you say the words prejudice and neglect, what do you mean? What is the greater meaning of those words?
That was my impression, is us trying to compress the idea that the Potter's Field is a lot of different systems coming to play. And often there's that conflation of, of race, of immigration status at the time, even of religion, that is both, sometimes could be intentional, sometimes is, there's a larger system in that the US and Lafayette is operating on a white supremacy system. And so even if there was not a person who said, you know, well, you are Latino, you're an immigrant, you're Catholic, you're going to be buried here, there was still a larger system that meant often it was Latinos and immigrants and other minorities who, because they were poor, because they were paid less, or because they weren't born here, that sort of thing, would still end up in the Potter's Field. And, and so trying to like compress, again, that larger context into a phrase that felt accurate while also not go, getting into all of that, I think that was what we were trying to do and, and understand that we may not have succeeded in, in that, and it might require more, more context or more direct language.
I appreciate the answer. That's what I wanted to hear. I, I know a lot of, a lot of work goes into this, and I know that language is really very important, so words are very important. The reason I ask you that is because you, you just, you just kind of hit what I wanted to get to, which, why not get into that, right? Why, why are we, why are those, the words that come out when I ask, what does prejudice mean in this? Why did the other words go away? Because I think we're talking about history and we have to be very clear with history, right? We have to be very, very honest as to what.
Because the names that are mentioned in the other language can't be verified. It's too specific. It can't be, it can't be verified.
I wasn't speaking on names.
And so, yeah, it would be difficult to name Henry Mathias by name if there's no evidence of him specifically doing something. And you got to have evidence, especially if it's going to be in, in a city document, you know? And I would love to see the evidence, and they keep asking for evidence. And every time we do work, we send it out to Frank and Doug, but they don't, we've only seen what you see. And I haven't seen anything else. And I've looked at additional sources, and I'm not seeing evidence that supports those claims. That's why I wrote a, a 12-page essay, trying to walk through the process of how we came to that language. And I don't see evidence that supports that.
I, I wasn't speaking on names.
Well, but that's in their language, though.
I'm not, I'm not speaking to their language. I'm, I'm really trying to get to the, to the reasoning behind your language, right? We're talking about the language that's being in front of us today, not necessarily Frank's. I've never said the name Henry Mathias or Fred Autry, that's not what I'm talking about right now. I want to know why prejudice was in there, why did words like discrimination and racism go away? That's really what I was going to get to at the beginning, but I have not had, heard an answer to that.
I think our hesitation was always trying to find a balance of, as, as historians, you can look at the evidence in the documents, and then it is really hard to prove intent beyond that. And so again, trying, like you said, that language is, is specific and it matters, and so that prejudice and neglect, we felt comfortable using those words based on the evidence we've seen, whereas racism and discrimination start to assign more intent that we, again, that is more open to interpretation, that we feel like requires more context to those words. And so that's why I think we landed on, on those, on prejudice and neglect. Yeah, that was our, was our thought process behind that specific language.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, freedom.
Can I just ask a question about process, if that's okay? In, I think it was page one of the research essay that you worked on, you said that, was that, the board was asked to do the research, asked you to do the research, you did the research, and then the board created the language. But then at the very end, I think, you said something around that you also approve, you approve of the language that the board recommended? Is it, is it that like there was a first section and the language is created and then the second section occurred? Help me understand.
It's been going on for so long, it's hard for me to know.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's a really iterative process. I mean, because I, I researched language in Potter's Fields and memorial fields too. A friend of mine, Jim Welch, has been working on this for 30 years, trying to memorialize the Irish miners in Ludville. So I had conversations with him about this because there was nothing commemorating that. So I did research on what kinds of language has been used in public spaces. And it varies, but I thought most of all it needed to be respectful and accurate. There are a lot of people who walk around in the cemetery, and they have family members there and friends and loved ones there. And it needs to be respectful to the people who walk through there. It also needs to be factual. So it's, it's been such a long process that it's been very iterative process.
Thank you.
And I think in that essay, there, it, there's a point where it shifts more to almost like first point-of-view language, that was written by Lee, and that's where she says that she supports the board's language. So it is, yeah, just that.
Okay. So that was another one of my questions too, in that there was like a first section that seemed more royal, we, kind of, and then shifted to a little more personal. And everything after that, you noted in the document, say, the rest is, everything after that is, characterizes that way? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So just so I'm understanding, to make sure I understand, understand the process, so the, the board was asked, go do this, it was assigned, right? Basically.
We had an assignment.
Assigned. You went and did it.
We wanted to avoid this, believe me, until you asked. We wanted to avoid this, believe me, until you asked. We were gonna like, nope, we're not going there.
Can I ask you, why, why did you want to avoid it?
Are you kidding me? Because of this.
Yeah.
Well, there's, it's a no-win situation. You know, Frank and Doug have done fabulous work. They do work that nobody else will do. They sit and look at every page of the parish record. They look at every article in the Lafayette ledger. They do the work. They talk to people. They make the phone calls. I respect them a lot. So they, they've done fabulous research.
So why?
And I, I didn't want to make a mess.
Why didn't we get to an agreement, then?
Good question.
I mean, I saw, I think, I think.
That's a question for us, right? For the past council?
Well, I can answer that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of what happens is there is a perspective, and this is my opinion, that I think, number one, history is messy. And we'll share a little bit about my history to clarify, because I can look at history through a lens that I think others can't. And, you know, and I think all of us can, right? So my history, when I hear, um, the Chinese helped build the transcontinental railroad, they were a significant portion of the laborers. Yeah, that's true. But they don't talk about the racism. They don't talk about the fact that they were barred from fishing or doing any other businesses, and were forced into labor, that they had the exclusion acts against them. So there's a big portion that's kind of, it's out there, it's, it's hanging out there, but it's not fully addressed. So it's messy. Right? So what I think we were looking for, and what we were looking for from, um, the Historical Society, was where's the page in the book that I can reference this back? Where is the, here's this note from, you know, 1801, this newspaper, or 1901, that referenced this. How do we know for a fact this person potentially could have been in the KKK? And, and that's where it gets messy, because there are certain people in the public that refuse to look to collaborate, number one. Number two, we're not willing to share research. And that happened with the Mary Miller situation. So we've dealt with certain people who want a specific outcome versus, hey, let's come together, let's collaborate. And I think Lee would, would agree with that statement, that I've worked with you now, now since six years on City Council, and we've always tried to get to collaboration, get to a space where we can say, hey, let's, let's figure this out, let's come to some joint agreement. But there doesn't seem to be any willingness to compromise. And that, to me, has been the issue, because messy history, and there's not a willingness. There's, there is a intent, that it's my way or the highway. And I think that, um, I have never in my life been called racist, except by members of this community who I disagree with on how this topic works. And that by, but, but by all means, is absolutely not true. And so this idea that, um, so I'm going to address the ugly, and I am addressing the ugly, because that's how I feel, that there are certain members of this community who refuse to compromise, who will argue and argue their point because they wanted their way of the highway, and not willing to work and show good effort compromise to get to a point where we're at today. And that, those two forces, I think, what you're seeing collide, you're seeing collide with people who have a specific perspective, and then you have individuals who are asked to do a task for a memorial plaque at the cemetery, that have done what they've been asked to do with little support to get to where we're at today. And so that's how I, I think that perspect, that has happened over time. People may disagree, and that's fine. They have every right to disagree with my statement, but I have a right to my statement too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I think, you know, I guess to go back to both of your original questions and points, and just to make sure like everyone feels like, uh, you know, they have all the information needed, I think the real issue that we've, are running into in this particular situation is that you have members of the community that are saying that these bodies were buried here based off of ra, based off of race, right? It was racist, it was toward, because of discrimination. And then you have members of the Historical Museum, the ones that we tasked and delegated this, um, this, this task to, that said, yes, that's certainly true, um, in most cases, and, but in other cases, they may, they may not be there because of those reasons, they may be there for other reasons. And so to lump them all together and saying they're all here for these specific reasons based on race, uh, is not fair to do, because that can't be confirmed. And so that's sort of where that disagreement is coming, and ultimately council is the decision-making body, and we think, we're very thankful for, for everyone that's been involved in this process, that's done the research, and has told us, hey, this is what I think, that these are why these bodies are here, and then other folks that say, here's what I think. And now ultimately, we, none of us being historians, you know, are now going to, our task, uh, this is why this job is very difficult, because now we need to come in and make that decision. Um, and so, you know, there is disagreements. Um, and so, um, you know, what I would recommend, I don't know if we want to get into that already, um, you know, is, is a sort of a win-win in, in my mind, is to keep the proposed language as is. However, add more information, as we saw on this, through the slideshow presentation, there is opportunities for additional information. That being a QR code, like, all of the great research that Frank and Doug have done, let's, and the list of names, let's make that accessible to the public. Let's not bury it. Let's 100% acknowledge the racist past we've had, former, former mayors in the Klan, former members of city staff in the Klan, right? And let's make sure it's accessible with 2025 technology. Go use this QR code, use something next to the plaque, take your phone out, click on it, take you to a website with a list of names. We are not burying the list of names, they are 100% accessible to anyone in the public. Also, let's have that link lead to all of the great research members of the community have done, like Mr. Conroe, Mr. Archileta, let's make sure that the public can see all of your work. And then the plaque itself is, is written as recommended by the Historical Society, and, sorry, by the Historical Museum, and by staff. And so no, nothing's being buried, nothing's being hidden, no one's trying to avoid saying we've had racist members of this community, which we obviously have, like, that's not a, a jo, or that's not something we're hiding. And then, you know, we're just, it, it's, it'll be, it could be, it'd be available at the museum, these, these hard copies, it could be available at the library, these hard copies, and everything can be digitalized. Like, you look, think about this, like, the, the, the photos of the mayors on the wall, right? Those all got taken down. My face does not need to be up there, right? But we're working to digitalize that history, so that people can access it, but we don't necessarily need, you know, my face engraved on the wall, or the mayor's faces engraved on the wall, but the history should be remembered, because we're living in 2025 now, and that stuff is all accessed, um, on the, uh, now will be accessed on the city website. You see what I'm saying? That's my recommendation, but obviously, you know, I want to hear from you all, and definitely open to hearing your thoughts. Yes, Counselor Sampson.
I'd like to go back from the beginning, and you've heard me say the very first thing that we're being asked tonight. Do we want, and this is what we were asked originally, do we want a memorial plaque or an interpretive sign? The language we were given a couple of years ago was, uh, long enough for an interpretive sign. Interesting enough, what I felt like is that that language wasn't enough, and you couldn't fit everything. You can't fit this plus four or five more packets like this on an interpretive sign. And so to me, um, I very much want the memorial plaque with the QR code sign. I really think being able to collect all the information, record it, and keep it, that's the part that I read in here, where we're, we are going to make a difference for things that weren't done in the past. So I do like that. I also really like what's recommended in here, that the city library and the history museum have a record. So there's always a backup. I do really like that. Again, that was something that we've been informed of, that the loss of those records, well, if there was a backup, then we wouldn't have had a loss of all these records. So I really do like that. Um, I gotta be, because I'm nitpicky on things, there's a couple of words in the proposed plaque language that was, that's brought to us tonight, um, that I would like to change a little bit. I will tell you, um, as another council member has said, I don't like the "we," um, because I'm trying to figure out who the "we" is. Is it the city of Lafayette? Is it the community? Who's the "we"? I don't like "should." I don't think we should be "shooting" on ourselves. I think we should be saying, "we are." This is. So we shouldn't acknowledge, we just want to say, "we are acknowledging." Or just, yeah, I actually think, the other part that gets me in this is, we sort of eliminate the fact that, um, we're saying that we're here, that people have only come here to remember, honor their family and friends, but there's many of us who don't have family or friends in that cemetery, and we still honor them. You know, the whole community honors the people that went before us. So if it were me, I would actually start with, I'd eliminate the first 19 words, it'd start with nearly 200 women, children, infants, and men, perhaps more, and then go on from there. So that it immediately says, we're acknowledging right up front, this is who is, this is for. Give me my notes.
No, I got it.
That's how our process worked on the board. So imagine 10 people, and now you, coming together, writing a group document.
Yes, I get it.
It's up to you to decide if you're going to open that can of worms again.
Sure.
But we don't care. It's not a single author.
Yep.
You know?
So I guess I'm wondering if we have more questions for them, or if we should?
Yeah.
We're standing up here. Yeah, let's just make sure everyone has, feels, feels like, no, I know, I kind of, that was my, I just want to make sure that everyone has the information they need. So, yeah, any questions for, for the, for staff or for the museum?
We got to sit down.
Before we get into our.
I do want to say thank you to City Council and to the city staff, who've done a great job working on us with this. And again, thank Doug and Frank for all of their work, both in researching this and in bringing these issues to light, and they have met with us a bunch of times and shared research, and we're always grateful to, to their work and to everyone who's been working on this for, for years now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Always happy to answer questions.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, so I think, you know, we've heard from myself and Counselor Sampson on terms of like where to go from here, uh, but definitely want to hear from everyone to make sure everyone feels heard and, you know, make sure we come to a consensus. Counselor Gallegos?
So I would like to reach resolution. I think it's unfair to the members of our community who have family members buried there. So I would like to do whatever we can to come to a consensus and move this forward. I do like the modernization and including the QR code, and including research in addition to the list of names. Um, I do think that is a great way to reach a compromise between everyone who has put in the research. And I know that there is the possibility of this being installed this summer, and to me, that's important to the members of the community who have friends and family there.
Thank you. Others? Counselor Freedland?
Um, so I think I would add to what folks have already offered, that I think we should continue to try to bring the, the updated language with a little bit more of that, because I, I agree with Counselor Tapi Vega. I, I do find it kind of, um, it feels like we're dancing around the issue a little bit. I recognize that racism isn't the only reason people are in that cemetery, but when you look at the number of folks buried, and you correlate that against the years that the Klan was strong in Colorado, and from what we can tell, strong in Lafayette as well, it, it does feel like a coincidence that it, we can't say didn't, isn't a coincidence. It's a, it's, it's, it's a coincidence, it's, it's standing right there. And so I think we should at least, you know, we don't have to say everyone that was buried here was because they were, you know, discriminated against, but it does seem, you know, quite odd that we have a lot of those missing records, and we have, um, you know, a high percentage of Latino names in this, in this list, and we had, you know, the KKK very active in Lafayette politics. So, you know, I, I would hope that maybe we can at least bring that a little bit farther and, and try to, um, you know, bring it from sort of like the back to at least the middle. Um, so I, I would hope that we can maybe continue to work to get to that resolution, where we have a little bit more agreement, that, yeah, we're closer on this. Um, in terms of the names, for me, if I had somebody there, I would want the names to be on the plaque, just being very honest with you. I, I appreciate that it's not perfect, I appreciate that it's hard to put all the names, I appreciate that more are going to be discovered, um, and I like the idea of the new technology, but I don't know if somebody who's going there is necessarily going to know to do the QR code. You know, I, I think, I think having the names there, um, it, it would be a nice thing for us to do, um, and an important thing for us to do. So I'm, I think I'm, I'm leaning towards that, that we should, we should figure out how to include the names, as imperfect as that solution might be. Um, you know, I think that's a, it's a, it's a, it's an important symbol for us to, to consider. I, I also agree with Counselor Gallegos that, you know, let's figure out ways to talk more about the history and the context. You know, whatever venue, at the museum, at the library, um, you know, I think, I think this is a story that, one of the reasons why these things keep coming up is, we're not telling that whole story. So I think we should, we should attempt to work together to try to tell the story, um, so that maybe we can sort of have this connectivity, um, and, uh, feel like we're really trying to, you know, weave, weave through the past as difficult as that might be.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Others? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, for the record, I'm going to read from our strategic outcomes, just three of them, safe, welcoming, and inclusive. Lafayette is a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community that maintain, maintains a sense of small-town livability by promoting diversity of culture, ideas, and neighborhoods. We give voice to residents, business owners, and guests by ensuring accessibility to services, facilities, amenities, and elected officials. Bold, authentic leadership. Through risk-taking and imagination, Lafayette has a reputation as a regional leader that is forward-thinking, proactive, and adaptive. Strategic and initiative leadership guides decision-making and promotes equitable and inclusive policies and services. And last one is sense of place. Lafayette is a community that thrives with a unique vibe and supports a connected sense of community through natural spaces, the built environment, arts, history, and multiculturalism. The intentional use of our creative, diverse, and eclectic identity builds pride in our community and inspires a sense of belonging. And there's, yes, four of us have been having this conversation for years, and I do remember having this conversation in different incarnations with Counselor Wong, um, for years. And we've had this discussion, we talked about, how do we get the community to be involved in having, having this work shared? The history share, people's life experiences, the culture that is here. And I went to the Latino History Project, and I sat in one of the exhibits that, that got dark, the shades went down, the lights went off, and the, the, the story was that the Latinos had to be, they had to have their lights off when the sun went down. And then I noticed that it said, the young boy who lived there at this house worked, was allowed to work at the farm across the street, but not the people in the house. And it was the Neeboam Farm. And I thought, I know right where that is. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's where that exhibit was described. And as a sundown city, uh, if you were black, you had to be gone, like, out of the city. The Asian population wasn't treated any equitably, more equitably either. And that population, we were working in the mines, uh, doing the work here, and it's not represented. The, the experience that we, um, have may not be represented. And then I have met multiple people, one of the things I couldn't understand when I first got on council and being in Lafayette was, what is the, what first got on council and being in Lafayette, was, what is the, what has changed in this city? And I think I heard it alluded to in public comment, I've heard it alluded to by people who have been here and come back, who are part of this community. And it's been explained to me. Mr. Archuleta took me through the, the plaque that is at the baseball fields, and I was there for the, the plaque dedication at the Roselores Pool, and the connections go deep. There are history here in this city, and the experience of the people's lives, and the culture, and the mixture is a, is a gigantic representation of why this, this place is so energetic. And we finally have a history museum who can, that can dig into this. We have a GIS system that can try to keep track of this. There's a lot going on, and Juneteenth is coming up, and I, I just can't separate what Africans and African-Americans struggle through in order to, to persist. And, you know, over time, if you write something down, and it's used against you, but you learn not to write it down, and you find other ways to, to move through. Herod Tubman, like, her history has been removed from where the Underground Railroad is. Is it forgotten? No, it's not forgotten. The, the tradition of oral history does not get accounted for and respected the way it should. There are oral histories that can last much longer than written histories, but that's a skill, that's art, that must persist. And it's what we maintain, that's how we can maintain our culture, by we, I mean humans, humanity. We can do this, as long as we talk to each other, and there are obvious problems with written history, in, in many different circumstances, not just in the city, worldwide. Like, okay, it was written down like that, there are gaps in that written history. There are oral histories intentionally to combine what our understanding of what the past is. And this is gonna sound like a real non sequitur, but I sat in on a first-degree murder trial, and a, and this trial, this murder happened so long ago, a memory specialist had to come in, and that memory specialist told the jurors that we remember things differently over time. The, the specific details are not as resolved. So oral histories are not perfect. Written histories are not perfect. What is perfect is that we are here today, and the, the love for this city, the history of this city in the built form, in the written form, are palpable. You can, I missed that word, but you can, you can sense it. People love being here. All the people here love being here. And there's a reason why there's so many people who have something to say about this city. And I want to respect the fact that we uphold a bold, authentic leadership, a sense of place, and a safe, welcoming, inclusive city, when I, my personal senses, I heard, I heard tonight, people saying how they feel about things, and how they think about things in relationship to this question. I respect all of that. What has not been in this space is the impact, that the fact that this is driven on for, well, somebody said five years, I think it's been three or four, the fact that this is driven on, it's, it shows that we haven't reached these outcomes yet. And what I'm hearing, when I see, as a, as a veteran, now, I, I did not serve in a war zone, I worked with people who served, and I respect that history. And you have to know that the memorials that are written in stone mean enough that I think it's our responsibility to write those names down, so people can see those names. If you'd seen somebody who sees a war veteran's memorial, Vietnam War, Korean War, if you see somebody who lost everyone, but all they have is that wall, all they have is the history, all they have is the truth about what happened, I think, I think we have a responsibility to include that piece. And we, we have, I have heard enough that I think it is, it's imperative to, we need to include what has been dug up by the people who have done the work here, and what, what Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Conroe brought forward. I think we deserve the respect to put up what they want us to put up, and know that our, we have a process in place. And in this case, that process, I don't think matches the weight of what we're dealing with, which is a legacy of oppression, that it's not just those two individuals. We have people who came in this room, who made the effort here, that have never been in this room. And I was told, like, this, the city was not welcoming to some members of this community, and tonight, some of those members of the community I never expected to see walked in here and asked us to respect this request, and I can't walk away from that. When I see, when I see these individuals who respectfully say, please put those names up there, yeah, when they walk into the, it, it is exactly what you've said. Like, when you get into a grave site, you want, that is a place of mourning. You want to be able to, to experience what's there. And without those names, without the reason why they're there, I think we're doing a disservice to our community. I think we should uphold the experience of the Latino community in this, in this city, in this time, right now, and say, like, this happened. And I challenge other cities to come up with the, the nerve to say, like, hey, and I think it was Ms. Munoz pointed out, like, that happened a while ago, and it was not just the Latinos who were oppressed at that point. And unless we talk about it, unless we say that happened, I don't see that we are respecting the legacy, the history, the family, the welcoming of this community, unless we put those words up there. And I've, I've heard this for too long, and I feel like we're dancing around, talking about trying to gatekeep something that is part of this community. We've got members of this community who are saying, like, I don't feel I'm completely part of this city, and this is one thing. I'm not saying to avoid the, the QR codes with the deeper information, but we're, they're asking for some specific words and those names. And I think we are, we have the obligation to put those up there, and defend the fact that those names are up there, and that we recognize that happened, and this, yeah, it's gonna open a can of worms, but we need to talk about it. And I can't not provide that for the community that's asking for it. That's all I have. That was a lot.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for sharing all that.
Yeah, I think that's, I appreciate your, your sentiment around it. I think that simply you and I have stories that may not resonate necessarily in this community. I think, number one. Number two, I think that what I was getting to in, in my statements earlier, and to be very clear, I've seen the rigidness, not the ability to have an open and honest conversation about what we could do going forward, that doesn't whitewash, but it's, it's discussion of, it's my way or the highway, and I think that that's where I'm coming from, that's frustrating for me. Because I know history's messy. We all know history's messy. And, and I think that's the frustration where I come from, being here on this council, time after time, sitting up here, being told that I'm not looking at it through the way an individual may want me to look at it, because I may have a different experience. But it's that lack of respect from my perspective, I think that's frustrating. Cause I know there were times after the meeting, where I go and I talk to the individual, or I've seen the other individual, or other people in the community engage with members of council, and say, hey, let's, let's talk about it, let's figure this out. And there's this, there's this hard line, and it's inability to have a conversation and say, well, this is important to me, and this is why. Instead, we get into name-calling, and we get into this false sense of, you go to your corner, and I'll go to my corner. And I'm trying to address my statement, to be very clear, to answer your question. I'm not, you know, I don't think I've made a statement necessary, what I feel on the plaque, and I'll get to that. But I wanted to make sure that that was clear with council, that that's what I was addressing in my perspective, as far as sitting on this council now, through this entire discussion. Okay, that, that's there. So I'll just want to put that aside, and so we know where that conversation was. As far as what we were tasked to do, or what I believe we were tasked to do, I think that, again, it goes back to what Counselor Sampson said, we were asked for a memorial. And I think that the language that is for the plaque, yes, I'm fine with all the changes, I think that's something we can put forward. So I'm trying to take this piece by piece, okay?
I'm sorry, which changes are?
The, the changes to the plaque language.
Oh, from Counselor Sampson.
From Counselor Sampson. So I support that. I think when it comes to the names, I really like the idea of having it in a digital database, simply because there are some descriptors that don't necessarily, you know what that, what it necessarily means when you look at someone, like, someone just says, baby boy. You know, there's not necessarily a, a significant piece to that. I think whenever you do lists, however good intentional they are, they're incomplete. And so how then do you fix that situation? Here's my example. In Minidoka, in Idaho, there's a former internment camp, Japanese internment camp, that had an honor roll of those members who had joined the military, and had their name put up on an honor roll, that they then have recreated. Cause after World War II, as people may or may not know, I'm sure the mayor knows, the camps were taken apart and dismantled. Nothing was left except for a foundation, potentially maybe a water tower, so, but very little. Most of it was taken off and sold off. In that camp, the, the names of all the different soldiers that served was taken down and gone, lost to history. They recreated it, but then it's imperfect, because there were, there were people that were on that plaque that weren't. And so how then do you address those individual, and, and the park service has been doing a great job doing it. And so that's where, if we want to have a conversation, potentially saying, hey, here's our snapshot in time. But I think that the larger question is, how are we going to address those that may come forward later on, saying, oh, hey, maybe there's this. Or my family member lived in Lafayette, and they, they had the Spanish flu, and they were buried, and I don't know where they are, maybe they're there. And so that's the larger question that I'd like us to try and figure out. Like, I'm open to the idea of listening to say, hey, what does the plaque look like? And is it a memorial plaque, or is it something separate? And that's maybe what we really have to look at, is two separate items, maybe. But I'm willing to have that discussion. But I think what we were set forward with was a memorial plaque, and then if we wanted, I like the digital piece, if we wanna talk about the names, maybe we talk about it in a different aspect, but not necessarily on, this is the memorial plaque. But these are the people that we believe, based at this point in time, that may be here.
If it's okay with you, I'd like to hear from Counselor Tapia Vega. Just because I, I've heard from everyone. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, yeah. Let's see. I'm, this is a, this is a difficult conversation for, I think, everyone, so I appreciate everyone sharing as much as I did, I genuinely do. And I, I appreciate our museum, and of course, our, our local residents for, for all their work, especially Doug and Frank, thank you so much for everything you've done. I'm not exactly sure how to get through this one. It's, it's, it's difficult, because of course, we want to make, we, we understand there's a sense of permanence with the plaque, and we wanna make sure that if it is a memorial plaque, we do something that, the language not only acknowledges everything, but does so in a way that we all, of course, agree with. But I just, I'm looking at the language again, and it doesn't quite hit what I want it to hit, unfortunately. And it's not necessarily because I think the language is bad, I just think, you know, there's choices in words. Counselor Sampson was very astute in the way she kind of cut some words out, because they absolutely make sense, those. But for me, you know, looking at words like prejudice, that's good enough to go in a memorial plaque, but racism or discrimination isn't. Looking at words like neglect, but mistakes of our past, isn't. I don't, I know those aren't synonyms necessarily, but when we're looking at our history, I think it's more important to be very specific about what it was, and not necessarily have words that have a broad meaning that could kind of mean anything. I think specificity is important. But I wanna highlight one single sentence, which is the second-to-last sentence in this proposed plaque language. It says, although we cannot right the wrongs of the past, we can begin to atone for them. I understand we cannot right the wrongs of the past, but for me, it is especially irresponsible, we can't even talk about them. This plaque, this memorial, as good as it can be, and as perfect as the language can be, will never right the wrong of the past. But if we don't even call it out for what it was, then we did not do our jobs. And secondly, we can begin to atone for them. So although we cannot right the wrongs of the past, we can begin to atone for them. To me, this is interesting, because this is what was brought to us as the language from our, for our museum, but we can begin to atone for them, doesn't make sense, because this is kind of the end of the road. This is, this is the end of the road. If we're beginning to atone for them, there should be something after. There should be, this is the beginning of a process, and as far as I know, putting the plaque up, and then we're getting in our cars and driving home. I think there has to be more here. And I don't exactly know if that's something that anyone wants to take on. The research has been done by local residents, and I appreciate that. But I think, if we're really looking at our history, and really wanna be thorough, we have to be thorough. And beginning to atone for what has happened doesn't mean putting up the memorial plaque and going home. I think there has to be more work here, more research done here, and I'm willing to compromise in some way or another on this, on this language, and I'm willing to put something up, because I understand it's really important, and it's, it's, it's a long process. But I think on the back end, especially if we're gonna go down the road of, of a website being, being on our site, or being somewhere else, I think this council has a responsibility to really do more, and not just put up a plaque that has language that we agree on, and then everyone forgets about it next Monday, right? I think there should be more here, and if we want to include the names, I'm fully willing to have that conversation. But as of now, again, back to the beginning, this language seems just a little bit lacking.
So you specifically would like to see the, that out, the language proposed by Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Conroe, or would you like your own language, or you wanna specifically mention the words race and discrimination?
Well, I didn't wanna change any of the language until someone else started cutting stuff, and now I guess that's on the table.
I just wanted, I just wanna hear what you wanna do.
I wanted to give you nineteen words back that you can put in here, just different words. Well, let me, can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Okay. So if we were able to change things, so discrimination actually means, definition, prejudicial treatment. So in my mind, you could, if you felt, I guess, the question that I'm asking is, would you feel good if, instead of many lived in poverty or faced prejudice and neglect, faced discrimination and neglect? Would that help? Everybody still thinking?
Well, when?
And I was gonna say, yeah, no, I was asking, I'm asking the three that seem to be concerned. And, and the reason why I keep asking this is, I feel like I don't want to kick this can down the road anymore. I think it's unfair, we talked about being fair to the community. I agree with every single, what everybody has said up here. I also acknowledge the empathy, because everybody up here has experienced prejudice, and everybody and their family members have, different. So I'm trying to get to where we're at. I recognize race is a word, but I'm gonna tell you, some of us have experienced prejudice, not because of our race.
And I'm not saying racism shouldn't be the only word that goes in, I'm just saying that's a very specific fact that was brought in. that's a very specific fact that was brought in in the, in the report, and it's not contested by anyone in our historical society or otherwise, so I think it should be included in some way or another.
Okay.
So I'm not saying that's the only thing that should go in, I'm saying it shouldn't get cut.
Okay. So that's why, I guess what I'm saying is if, is there a way to incorporate the things that you feel are missing into this, so we can do what we've said, is get this out this summer if we can, you know? That's really important. And not bury any of this, again, I mean, that's the point, because I feel like if we, if we don't move this forward, we are stalling and we are burying.
So I have a question, why are racism and discrimination taken out then?
That, that's why I'm asking you, if, if prejudice-
That's what you wanted in.
If discrimination means prejudicial treatment, you could, do you feel more comfortable taking the word prejudice and replacing that with discrimination? So that, that says, many lived in poverty or faced discrimination and neglect? Does that get you part of the way there?
Part of the way? The, what's, the, what's, so the racism piece, why is that not included? Racism and discrimination?
Okay. Um, you're gonna have to go, we're gonna have to go beyond racism.
Let's go, let's go there.
Because that's why I'm saying, if, if, but if that's what you're saying, racism, discrimination, neglect, okay?
But isn't racism, I'm going to ask this question, because again, this is asking a question, isn't racism a product of discrimination, and so is sexism, and all the other isms? Doesn't just discrimination capture it all?
So you said all the other isms. We're calling out racism, discrimination, prejudice is the way it's done.
No, but I think, I think what you didn't hear, and I'm just pointing out, Counselor Sampson had mentioned that there is more than just racism that could have potentially happened, it could have been sexism. I mean, or I, what I heard, maybe was, maybe she didn't intend it, but I heard that she was trying to say, but there's also others, maybe sexism. And so that's why, rather than being, that's why I'm wondering if-
Or religion, or-
Or religion, or-
Sexual orientation, because-
So, yeah, exactly, because again, this is the past, does discrimination capture all of those different isms? And that's what I'm, that's the question I'm asking you. So if we use discrimination, does that then capture everything? Because you don't want to just say racism, that it, there's more there.
Okay, well, there's a, it's been said many times, there's a preponderance of evidence, and evidence I, it cracks me up, this is not a investigation. But there is obviously a bigger demarcation of racism. It's not the only one, but racism is a heavy player in there, so to, to put that with the multiple isms that are there.
And I'm not saying that we should put all the isms out there. I'm just asking, is discrimination covering the word racism on the plaque? And that's the only question I was using, maybe the other were examples, and maybe that's, that's the question that I'm asking.
I'm wondering, so what, Counselor Sampson, what would you, what do you recommend?
I'm, I'm totally fine if we want to write, many lived in poverty or faced racism, discrimination, and neglect.
Yes, I agree with that, that's-
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, that's perfect, because I was gonna ask Mayor Brothman, if we use racism to discrimination, then fill the rest for you, is that okay for you?
That, that, I was fine with it, I just didn't know, I'm sorry, and I, maybe I misinterpreted yours, because you stopped it, you were saying, but then there's other things, and that's what I interpreted yours, so maybe I shouldn't be speaking.
I didn't want racism, I didn't want racism to replace discrimination or prejudice. I, I wanted, I felt like-
Yeah, I know.
I, I felt like that would have been-
So that's why, that was my interpretation.
Okay, so let's, let's figure out where we have similarities, okay? Because we have to come to a, oh, were you gonna add some news?
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we, is there anything else? The only other thing I heard is mistakes of our past. Is there, is there a problem? Because I read, although we cannot right the wrongs of the past, we can begin to atone for them. I read that as mistakes of our past.
I was the one who brought up mistakes of our past, and because I brought it up, I'm okay with, with wrongs of our past.
Okay.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from the majority of us is, if, I don't know if everyone has that proposed language in front of them, um, but, um, do you mind, actually? Uh, thank you.
So, wait, I have a question. So are we leaving atone for them?
Well, let's, I just want to do it one thing at a time. So at least let's start with-
Okay, so we're at the beginning.
Let's look at the very last sentence of that first paragraph, right? It says, many lived in poverty or faced prejudice and neglect. Are we okay with, in addition to those words, adding the words, uh, many lived in poverty or faced, uh, prejudice, racism, discrimination, and neglect? Adding the words racism and discrimination there? Can you redo it again? Just this, that last sentence of that first paragraph?
Many lived in poverty or faced racism, discrimination, and neglect.
Do we add anything there around, I mean, because I don't, I don't hear anything about this, our community owning it, to say like, they experienced racism and neglect and discrimination here. You know, like, at, with the city of Lafayette, the community of Lafayette. You know, it's, it's quite general, really, right? Like, generally, they experienced it? I mean, do we, do we go that far?
Well, we're talking about what's in, who's in the cemetery.
It's in the Lafayette Cemetery.
So you think, you were talking about those individuals, right?
Well, it is still very global. And we, the word here would cover-
Even here, or something like that, you know?
Well, not even here, here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's everywhere, right?
Here as well, or some, yeah, I, yeah.
Here is also the last word of the last sentence, too. So does that here refer back to the other here? Yeah, the nearly two, two hundred women, children, infants, and men perhaps more were laid to rest here in unmarked graves. This cemetery, like many others, has a potter's field where some were buried under wooden markers, now lost to time while others died far from home, unclaimed. Do you want to take out, like many others, would that make it even more clear? This cemetery has a potter's field where some were buried under wooden markers now lost in time while others died far from home, unclaimed. Many lived in poverty or faced racism, discrimination, and neglect. So by, like many others, we take that out, and all the words are talking about those in the cemetery.
Well, I think the like many others is connecting it to, that this is a, that the potter's field is a common thing around the country, right? This cemetery, like many others, has a potter's field. So I don't know, I think it's doing different things.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think if we just adjust that sentence, I mean, that should cover most of what, but we're not gonna stop, I mean, there's still more to this discussion. But in terms of this plaque language, uh, we're cool with, I'm hearing from a majority that we are cool with changing that last sentence to add the words racism and discrimination, we're okay with that, right? But what we're not gonna do is turn this conversation into a, a nitpicking workshop, because we're, there's seven of us with seven opinions, and it, it's, we have to do a whole retreat if we want to do that, right? And so, um, I would like to move on next to whether or not, you know, I'm hearing a sharp kind of divide, whether or not we include names physically on a plaque or not. I, I want to hear that we at least have support from a majority of councilors. I, well, one thing I'll say, when, as we transition to this part of the conversation, is that not a single person on this city council is advocating to erase the names, hide the names, not acknowledge the names. Not a single person is advocating to erase all of the history brought forward by either the Historical Society, Historical Museum, Mr. Conro, Mr. Archuleta, nobody is, not a single one of us is saying, oh, no, I'm scared, I don't want to, like, none of us are doing that. We all 100% acknowledge the racism that our, our city has had, our country has had, our state has, our world has had. We know that. Not a single one of us should ever be fearing being called a racist, okay? Especially because mo- majority of us are people of color, right? And so it's like, come on. And so, um, it's ridiculous. And, but what we should do is now think about the bigger picture, right? Because we decided as a council, when we face historical conflict like this, we are gonna go to the Historical Society. Now, we could, as a council, write the governing body, we could go back on that, saying, you know what? Actually, we don't want to go with the recommendation, we'd rather go with our local historians, we could totally do that. But what's gonna happen in three months, four months, five months, is another issue's gonna come to us, right? And then that precedent's gone, so then we have to start back again. Do we go with the local historians, do we go with the Historical Society? You know, and, and I think some of us have already experienced this three times, four times, while being on this council, that it's like, we've identified this process, so for us to go back on it now, we're essentially saying, thanks for all your hard work, not interested, we're gonna go with other folks. And if we are willing to do that, then let's put out an RFP and say we want to hire an independent Lafayette historical consultant, and you do all the work, and you make a recommendation, then we follow you. Because I'll straight up admit, Mr. Conro, Mr. Archuleta, they know way more about Lafayette history than I do. Who am I to sit here and say, you're wrong? Right? But we've identified the process of going through the Historical Museum. That's what we're already, and so, and they will then take that, eh, take that, um, task and work with local historians, develop a consensus, come back to us. And so, and it's my preference, my belief, is to go with that process, because if we go away from that now, I'm not gonna be on council forever, you know? But some of you will be here, on here longer than I will, you're gonna face this, and then you're gonna have to deal with everything that comes along with that decision of not following the precedent or changing it on a case-by-case basis. It is a disorganized mess, we cannot continue to have conversations where it's like, well, you know, I kind of like what this person's saying more than this person's saying. None of us know exactly what happened, and none of us can claim to, to know. And so what I want to say, that reason why I brought all that stuff up is because, let's decide on what we want to do with the rest of it, um, with the rest of what's been presented in front of us. Are we gonna add the names, yes or no? And also, if we're not gonna add them to the plaque, everyone is in agreement to acknowledge names in some way. Is that through something more permanent, like, the internet is way more permanent than a plaque. A plaque can be dis, it can be vandalized, it can be stolen, it can-
Oh, I will hold it, but to say that internet is more permanent than a plaque is not right.
All right, sorry, maybe the word permanent wasn't correct. You're right about that. I'm saying something that's more accessible to the world, something that will last longer, it, it's not going anywhere, right? Whereas things can be vandalized, destroyed, stolen, at any point in time. And what I, in my opinion, me recommending that is actually better than something that's, well, because like, would you want-
Okay, but that also assumes that everybody there has a phone with them, so, you know.
Sure, it's, I mean, I mean, I'm not just saying put it on the internet, I'm saying also put it in the museums, put it in the Lafayette Museum, put it in the Lafayette library.
What's wrong with putting it on the plaque?
Look, you, we, we would create it, you want to create a wall then?
Sure, there are walls that commemorate, and yes, I understand some people are called, some of the things are called baby boy.
So baby and then Chavez, Chavez, A B comma Chavez.
So the Daughters of the American Revolution are, they are trying to work out all of what's described on the, the veterans' plaque right there. And there's literally someone from a war in, I think it was the American Indian War, and they can't figure out who it is, it's just, there's just a demarcation that somebody's there. I'm not, I'm not gonna try to do the job of the people who, who it is to manage the cemetery, but, I mean, I don't know, it, I, I don't think we have to try to justify not putting up a wall because we know how to maintain it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna stop because-
I was gonna say, are you saying we are all in agreement, and maybe this is the clarification question, are we all in agreement that the, the records stay both in the History Museum and in the library?
Yes, I-
For sure, no matter what?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got that, okay. So now, your only, is the only question left, whether or not we put names, we, we get a larger plaque and put all the names on the plaque? Is that, Mayor?
To my belief, it is, if anyone disagrees with that.
I guess, I mean, did we come to, did we come to consensus on the language? I mean, I, from what I just heard you say, Mr. Mayor, we should allow the experts to continue to try to build consensus on this. I recognize that timing is challenging, I understand.
No, I wasn't saying that, not to continue it, I was saying, in, in the future, when another incident, like another, like-
I understand.
Another thing's gonna come up.
I understand.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is I don't think we reached consensus within our community that was informing us, whether it be the museum and local historians in the community, they did not reach consensus on a recommendation to us.
Right.
And so I think to say the process, which I understand, I agree, we should, I would love to lean on the process, I don't think we got there.
I don't think we're going to get there, it's been three years of non-consensus. There is not going to be consensus, period.
Okay.
So we have to make the decision, just like a judge has to make a decision in a case where there's so, there's, there's, there's so much information, and it's complex.
This is the bold authentic leadership, that I, this is how I interpret bold authentic leadership.
So here's what's, here's what I believe bold authentic leadership to be, would be, to say, listen to our comments and try to come to consensus. Continue, I don't, personally, hearing, I think detail of this last year of the work that was done, I think that there could have been more efforts to reach that consensus.
So what is it-
And I would ask them to try to do that.
What, and I was trying to get to, what is it that's missing? If we're trying to, because we could probably take a vote right now, based on what I hear, and we could move it forward. But we're trying to reach consensus, so I, I looked at this from what could we, what do I, what were my concerns, and how do I adjust it? Um, I heard Counselor, or Tapia Vega also say I needed these words, so we got those in there. What is missing?
I think there should be some comment around that a certain percentage, or, you know, a, a large number, a medium number, whatever we want to say in terms of this many folks, was law, this, these number, you know, this, these records were lost while we had white supremacist leadership managing the records.
But do you know-
I think there's enough evidence to, to support something like that.
But I'm, I'm going to challenge that, because, but do you know that, that because they were white supremacists, they made the records go away, or are you just making an assumption?
I, I'm saying, that's just a fact, right? This many records was during this?
I can't sit there and, I can't believe that that's a fact. Yeah, I, I can't sit there and say, if, because sometimes shit happens, and-
Ninety-four ti, 194 times?
But, but again, it happened, but again, again, I'm saying, and this is where I've always asked for like, so where are the facts? Do we have facts? Do we have facts that they are racist? Do we have facts that, you know, goes back to, this even goes back to the Mary Miller conversation, like, what were the facts? And it was all interpretive, and I understand your, your position on interpretive, but this is where-
Well, it's not interpretive, it's, it's not there.
But it's somebody, and there's nothing there, and so-
There's no fairness.
But then we're assuming, and that's where I have a problem assuming things.
We're not assuming, we're saying, this many records was lost during this time period when we had, um, we had leaders, leaders in this community, in this city, that were members of a white supremacist organization. Those are two facts.
Well, I, where, where's the documentation that shows me those are the facts? I'd like to, where, where was the documentation that says that Matthias was a member of the Ku Klux Klan?
Well, I think we're getting off, I think we're getting off.
But we're going down the rabbit hole again, that's all I'm saying, is that-
So, what we're noticing is like, this is gonna, we're never gonna come to an agreement.
That's exactly my point.
And this, this is just like a, you know, a representation of what's going on in the community as well, and so, uh-
Folks who have a lot of accreditation, who, who, who have a lot of knowledge to get us to that point, I hear you, but.
Um, okay, but at the end of the day, right now, we, we have to just come into this conversation, for the rest of this conversation, we need to just clearly think about what our role is right now in this situation. And we need to understand that ultimately, we have to come to a consensus, if we cannot do that, then we're gonna put it to a vote. And then whether or not you win, we, we win the vote or we lose the vote, we have to come to the understanding that, that we can't just sit here and do this for another two hours, or three weeks, 10 weeks, five years, because all we're doing is, is going against what we're, what we've been talking about this whole time, is not acknowledging that, because the longer we put it off, the, the more time spent not acknowledging these names is gonna occur. So let's just think about that, think about our role, because we're not just managing opinions, we also have to think about staff, we also have to think about each other, we have to think about the community, we're constantly juggling all three of those. And so we have to think about it holistically and come to a consensus. Right now, when I'm, I'll go out, what's awesome, what, what is great that I hear is that we're all okay with adding those words of racism and discrimination in last time, we're all okay with making sure that this history isn't buried, or, and we're or, and we're making sure that we're actually promoting it, or like showcasing it to the world through our museums, through our library. Those are all great things. Now, we just need to decide on one final thing, right? Is adding those names or not adding those names? And if we can do that, then I think everyone, the staff has the direction they need. And if we can't come to a consensus, we'll put it to a vote.
I think you have to vote, I don't know that you're gonna get consensus on the names, it's, it's either yes or a no.
And maybe the question is the language, and maybe this goes to what Counselor Friedland's asking for, is if you're saying you wanna, or we take a vote to see if you wanna pass it back to the experts to take a vote on that. But I start recommending to my fellow colleagues that we start taking votes, taking positions, because us trying to make consensus, I don't think is gonna happen, we're gonna be spinning.
Yep.
So, and we all need to understand, all this is best of intent for all of us, we're taking difficult votes, but we all need to understand that we're just doing what we believe is best for the city, and I want us to go into that with that, because that is ultimately what we're trying to do, and we get to look at different ways.
Absolutely. I, I think, you know, we have talked about not nitpicking language on the dais, right? And so, I recognize this is a, a unique situation, but to me, I was trying to stay away from that, right? Counselor Samson, I would've come here with trying to blend the two languages if I thought that was what council wanted to do.
Yep.
But I didn't do that, because I didn't think that's what, I thought we had said, let's try not to do that, because it's, it gets into these things, and this is really challenging. And so, that's one of the reasons why I'm saying, you know, let's maybe punt it back to say, please try to come to consensus. You, you hear our conflict up here, try to get there together, please. And then we can, you know, otherwise we're just nitpicking language, if that, but I really do appreciate your attempts, and your, your really, really good work on trying to bring the language together.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to help.
Yeah.
Thank you, by the way.
I re, I think, if you can't hear it, I really want to honor the people that are there, and I don't wanna wait.
I think, and then finally, we also have consensus on doing something as soon as possible, so, if, 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 if it works with whoever we're partnering with on the plaque to get something done this summer. All right, um, so we have, um.
Can I put forward a motion of what I think we've all agreed on, and then go from there?
Please.
So, I think we've all agreed on changing the last sentence in the proposed plaque language, that many lived in, I'm sorry, Counselor Samson, if you could.
Uh, many lived in poverty, or faced racism, discrimination, and neglect.
That's number one.
Yes.
Number two, that this should be, um, both made available in the library and at the historical museum, that the research and, and all supporting documentation should be provided to both organizations as a repository of the history.
Is that a change?
That's a recommendation.
No, we're adding.
That was a recommendation.
We're adding that, 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 uh, that was under opportunities for additional information. We are, we're recommending that because we wanna make sure that people know the history.
Okay, I think we all agree on that one?
Yes.
And then we all agreed that we want this to be done as quickly as possible.
Yes.
What about the QR code onsite?
And are we all comfortable with the QR code onsite, little, looking at that independently of whatever else may be going onsite?
Like, that's putting it on the internet.
Right.
Well, I think that's also connecting, right, to the history museum, right? Am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Is the QR code in lieu of putting the names?
Well, that's.
No, 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 that's not, it's just, that we're also gonna show, and maybe it's just not a QR code, but it is a way to access the data via the internet, whether it be a website or a QR code, that I think we've all agreed that that's in some form, that needs to, I'm just trying to be line by line for city staff, so we take the difficult part out of this for staff. Uh, uh, those are the four things that I'm moving, that we move forward with tonight, and then we'll start nitpicking, or we'll not, start taking apart the rest of it. So, that's my motion, I think it's been clear. Staff, you clear with the four things I'm moving?
So your motion is to move forward with those items?
With those four items.
All right. And so there's a motion to move, well, I'm the Victoria City Attorney, I mean, a proper motion, yeah? I just wanna make sure that's a proper motion.
Uh, I would recommend a, a motion to implement those things, I think I captured them in writing, but it, uh, Mayor Tim Wong, yeah.
Okay. So I would, I would move that we move forward with the four items that stated the change in the language on the plaque, the internet access of the, of the information, all information, the storage in, or availability in both the historical society, museum, society, whatever, the historical, the, the.
Museum.
History museum.
And the library, and then what was my number four?
The timing.
And the timing is to be done as quickly as possible, to potentially have something available this summer.
Yes.
Depending on where we go with the other votes.
Okay, so there's a motion.
Second.
There's a second, now, pause for discussion, uh, because I know that some of you are interested in, um, putting this, this names written on a plaque, so enlarging the plaque, adding those names, right? Um, so that gives us a couple options here. If you wanna amend that motion to add that, you may do so, or we can vote on this one, and then a second motion can be made, um, separately from this, to add those names. Or anything else.
I would suggest that we just move on this motion right now, and then we start taking it piece, because if we start amending, you know, a loss.
Putting up the option.
I know, I'm, that's my suggestion.
Were you gonna add something?
No, I was just saying you have a motion on the table, it's the second did, it's up to council how to proceed.
All right, any other discussion? All right, motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. None opposed, okay, that passes unanimously, great. All right, now, would anyone like to make an additional motion, or add anything else to the discussion?
So I think we should talk about adding the names on a plaque, in addition to having them somewhere else. And I think, you know, something that you, I thought you brought this up really nicely, was, it's not gonna be perfect, right? And I do think if you look at a lot of those names, there's, 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 there's research behind those names, right? And so, you know, to Counselor Wong's point, is this a slippery slope where someone's gonna come and say, I don't know where my person is, I knew they lived here, maybe they're there, let's add them to the, well, I, I think that's discrediting a bit the research that's gone on to build that list, so, there are gonna be some names there, they're not complete, right? Um, but I think that says a lot, actually. Um, and so, again, I'll come back to, if I had someone who was in this, I would wanna see their name up on a plaque at that cemetery. And I think, I think, to me, that makes it really important to have it there, and we can be really honest about, this list is growing, we're still working on it, please go here to learn more. This is an active thing, because we, we, we find this so important. Um, but I really, I, I agree, I think, I think having the names there is, is important.
And I'll add on to that, there is a tomb for the unknown soldier. We know this, right, in Arlington? And unfortunately, there's evidence that there was someone there, we just can't name them. I'm not saying we need a location for the unknown soldier, but this is the process of history, this is collected. And this may bring another family here, when they have, you know, evidence that it might be possible to get some information for who would go in that location. That could be what's on the QR code, and say, in that part, part of the, I'm not gonna try to do the job of people who will keep track of this, but to have a plaque there with a space accounting for somebody was there, I think is the respect we owe people who, you know, were not accounted for in history.
Is there a motion? Do you wanna move, Counselor Friedland?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, anyone who feels.
I mean, are there other comments that?
Well, this discussion, after you make a motion, so, I figured we could do that.
Okay.
Sorry, I have to step.
No, that's okay.
I move to approve that we, uh, put up a plaque that has the names identified so far, including space for additional future names that are discovered.
Second.
Just wanna check in with the city attorney, make sure.
It's clear, I'm sorry, it, it's, the motion's clear, I mean, Mayor, got it.
All right, we do have a motion and a second, any comments or discussion? Uh, I'll just quickly add that, uh, uh, some of us know, I mean, this, this job can be very, very difficult, and at the end of the day, especially in the position of mayor, is like, you're constantly working, you're constantly juggling, once again, the public, city staff, as well as your fellow counselors. I never wanna make sure anyone feels unheard or upset. I also, in the members of the community, never feel like I'm not, I never want you to ever feel like I'm not being a true representative of you. And then also for city staff, I wanna make sure that I'm also trying to work with you, understanding that at the end of the day, you're the ones that are doing the work. You're the ones that are gonna be doing the maintenance and the upkeep, and adding the names, and removing, or changing, or editing, and dealing with folks reaching out to you. You're the ones that, when it comes to the matching, as you mentioned earlier, where certain sites are, who's buried where, you're the ones that are gonna actually do it. And so, understand, or whoever it may be, or this, or that, I mean, I mean, exactly, it's gonna be city staff, right? And so, um, just trying to be like, trying to balance all of this, and doing my best to try to please everyone and make everyone happy, which is always impossible to do, and never, ne, probably my worst quality. I will likely be voting no on this motion because of that, and trying to look out for everyone. And, but at the same time, voting yes earlier, to make sure we are not erasing or disrespecting history, to make sure everyone has access through it, through, through, uh, through our museum, or library, and our, and our, and the internet. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there as we take this vote. Any other comments or discussion?
The only thing I'm gonna say is, as somebody that has tracked her history, um, we, I don't think of going to a memorial to do that. Um, we went through church records, um, in other countries to figure that out. So, for me, I don't think about that, I, I would immediately, I mean, I would, I would feel great if we had had a QR code where I could go and find it, cause I'm not looking just for the names. I mean, I'm looking for it, I'm looking for, when was that person baptized, or, you know, because sometimes they don't have birth records that go that far back. As well as, um, you know, I kinda think about the other side of it is, um, weather and time wears down headstones. Um, and so you start to lose those as well, when, and I, and I worry, I, I like the QR code, because I think then there becomes a QR code that says, hey, if there's a headstone here, and you're only, it only has some of the letters, that's still, you can go find that here. I'm always afraid of the people that aren't on that list, I guess is the, the thing that, that gets me. Those that, that were missing, and those family members will be offended if their names are not on that plaque. So I'm tossing on that.
Uh, oh, city attorney?
Mayor, if I may, as I'm thinking through this motion and proposal, I just wanted to call out for council that I have potential concerns with the administration and implementation of this motion if it passes, not because of anything to do with the policy or intent behind the motion, but solely because of, um, it, we don't have any standard or policy in place to decide which names, if more are submitted, to put on this plaque. Uh, right now, we have the benefit of a great deal of research from professionals and knowledgeable community members, while we don't have that same resource on our staff. And so I'm concerned that if staff and even council are put in the position of receiving names, that we at the city don't have the resources to determine
Can I?
the additional information for, to support that request.
Can I, can I take a stat or something? Counselor Friedland, I would like to propose a motion to amend your motion that would end the research at what has been provided to us in our packet, not allowing room for additional names to be added, unfortunately, and that it ends here, and that the names that we put forward are the names in the packet presented to staff. Cause I think that's what, I think the city attorney was getting at, cause she said, and room for additional.
Well, or it's identifying a process.
Yeah, I'm concerned about having to say yes or no. I don't want the city in that position.
Yeah.
I'm asking if we can lock it in, that what's, what's presented here, and then if, we can see where that goes.
No, it's better than the digital. The additional names, that QR code is, is just a QR code.
Or maybe I'm not, maybe, eh, eh, I guess, maybe, I even, I mean, I'm trying to be delicate and saying, hey, what do you think? But if you want me to take a vote, I can just call, or you can make a motion.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I.
Just I wanna try and be cohesive in a time.
Yeah, I, I would maybe ask that we spend more than, you know, a few minutes on trying to find a policy of like, yes or no. I feel like there, to me, there is a way to figure that out, you know, we could figure that out somehow. Um, I recognize we don't know it right now, um, but I don't know if that, us not knowing it right now is disqualifying to having that as an opportunity in the future. So I'm not, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I accept the amendment, I suppose, I don't know what the process is.
I don't know if people officially oppose.
I haven't, I just.
It's a friendly amendment, I appreciate that.
So I tried to do a friendly amendment, but I will now move that the council accepts the names in our packet as the names going forward of what we use, and any additional names that may be found, yeah, that we just use the names that are maybe used, so the staff doesn't have to decide, council doesn't have to decide, that that is, that is the information. So that's my motion.
So we have to vote on the amended motion.
So, point of order, did we get a second to Counselor Friedland's motion?
No, we did, uh, Counselor.
We did, okay, so that is a, uh, primary motion.
To yours.
We need to vote on that motion.
No, the amended motion first.
Well, if it's, I didn't hear it as a motion to amend Counselor Friedland's.
Yeah, I, I just moved it, I moved it as a motion, to the, to the, to the, the motion, to, I moved to amend the motion to lock in the names as what's in tonight's packet.
Okay, so that would need a second, and then you could vote on, uh, Mayor Tim Wong's motion.
Okay, do we have a second to Mayor Tim Wong's amendment? No. No seconds, okay, no second? Let's move on. Uh, now let's go back to the original motion, which was to, um, add the names to the plaque, while leaving, you said additional room for potential additional names to be added to that? Okay, and that was seconded.
So how do you, I guess, here's my question, then going back to the city attorney's question, how do you all envision it being, if somebody brings a name forward? What's the defined process? Is there a defined process?
Let me ask you a question, how much have you looked at the research that shows the existing names?
I've looked at the list numerous times.
So, I think there's quite a bit of backup documentation, it's either, you know, it's, it's a, it's a record from, uh, from, from the church, it's a record from the, from the record of the mortuary, the Hennepin Mortuary, it's a, it's a, um, clipping from a newspaper, saying that they were buried there, so like, all of those things to me seem qualifying.
So then, could you add that to your motion, saying, in order to add additional names, you need some kind of factual historical documentation, there's a process?
I think we, I think we should vote on the motion, and then afterwards, we have, we cannot leave, yeah, we can't leave staff in the dark.
Cause I just wanted to find that piece, cause I appreciate what you just said, cause I think that right there is a process that you kinda were getting at, that you actually thought of very quickly.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I digress.
Were you gonna add something?
Yeah, and then, I think that's a standard problem, so I think that's a standard we have now, and if you were to add more names, that would also be the standard then, and just to be clear, uh, the close to two hundred names that are now are fully supported by the entity that we are using to kind of get behind this, right, which is our, our history museum. They have in their language told us that they are fully in support of Frank Archuleta and Doc Conroe's two hundred names going on the plaque, if, as is feasible, is the language I gave to us. So, while it's not up there, it is in the, in the packet that was, uh, given to all of us. So these two hundred names are not just given to us by Doc Conroe and Frank Archuleta, the Lafayette History Museum is also full of them, right? And they, they mentioned that there are likely more, based on the missing records. So I think it's important that we leave this space.
Um, okay, so we do have a motion and a second, uh, oh, go ahead, Counselor Friedland.
So, just a question about leaving space, how much space? Let's say ninety-seven new names come forward next week, so how big are we making this? And how much space are we leaving? And what happens when after the ninety-seven names are added, there is no additional space, and more names come forward once again?
And, I mean, I think this is the overall concern, like, from staff, is, is, is like managing this process, and in receiving the names, and what to do with them. I mean, that's why I think we should, we should vote, see how that goes, and then afterwards decide on the process, because it all, it's all contingent on the vote, right? But you, you bring up, like, it's, the point you're bringing up is all part of the process, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's because, at the end of the day, someone's gonna actually have to do all the stuff we say, right? And, um, and so, I think after the vote happens, depending on how that plays out, if it passes, then we should spend a, a couple more minutes identifying that process. Um, and then if it doesn't pass, then there's no need for that, so I don't know.
I just feel that the QR code is the safer, more modern approach. It is much easier to add names to a document linked to our library and historical society than it is to engrave names in bronze on a plaque.
I think that's discussion.
Okay. All right, so, we have a motion and a second, to add the names, the, the specific names to the plaque engraved in there. Now, I'm gonna, we're gonna do a regular vote, and then if you need a roll call afterwards, let me know, okay?
So, Mayor, I just, I want to be clear on the motion, so, I apologize. So we, okay, so I have a motion from Counselor Friedland to approve.
so I have a motion from Counselor Friedland to approve placing the names identified so far in the records that you have in your packet tonight on a plaque at the cemetery with room for additional names. But I I think I just need clarification that council is not necessarily directing the placement of additional names without some further standards or policy that would guide us in doing that. I that's I still have that concern.
Yes.
So if there's no direction to add names, but we have room, I just want to be clear for the record, if the public is listening, that we're not being directed to accept any names that come in right now beyond what's in the packet until we have some standard. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'll just echo that this isn't going to be perfect. I hear you. I totally, I hear you. I it's a fair point, but it's not going to be perfect, right? But does just because it's not going to be perfect, does that mean we shouldn't do it? We'll see.
All right, thank you. So we'll do standard vote, and then if we need a roll call vote afterwards, we'll do one. Let me know. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
We need a roll call.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Monget?
No.
Counselor Sampson?
No.
Counselor Tapia Vega?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wong?
No.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Counselor Friedland?
Yes.
Counselor Gallegos?
No.
The motion fails with Counselors Gallegos, Mayor Monget, Counselor Sampson, and Mayor Pro Tem Wong voting against.
All right. So I think, you know, we did our best to try to come to agreement, but ultimately it did have to come down to a close vote. But that's, you know, part of this job. And what makes it so difficult is at the end of the day, we can't please everybody, but we're going to do our best to make sure everyone's heard and acknowledged. Does staff feel like they have everything they need to move forward?
Are we comfortable with the rest of the language? Or I'm, I don't want to bring this up again. But I didn't know if we were good with the language except for that one change. I thought there was some concerns about further concerns about it. Was that the only change? Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that
You're right. I had brought up the change that it starts with nearly and that we cut out the rest. But that wasn't in the vote.
Okay.
And in in the whole scheme of rules, will should drive me crazy forever, yes. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a name that's on that plaque. So I mean, I'm not, you know what I mean? I'm not buried there. So it's not my deal.
All right. Would council like to take a quick break?
Yes, please.
Before we get to the public hearing. All right, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll get to the public hearing. Thank you.
...
So, we'll transition to council questions and then public testimony before council discussion and then request for a motion. So, the property is located just south of Timber Trail and Aspen Ridge Drive intersection, immediately southwest Kohl's and just behind Tractor Supply. It is just under three acres in size. And as stated earlier, it's currently zone transitional business. The proposed zoning is public district. It's situated right between residential, the silo subdivision phase one to the immediate west, and the balance of the West Ridge commercial subdivision lies across Aspen Ridge Drive to the east. So, for undeveloped property, it's got a little history that is important for this rezoning proposal. In 2017, the city purchased this property, and the intent of that purchase was to consider a water treatment facility in this location. In 2019, the city entered into an IGA with Erie. And at that time, part of that IGA, the parties agreed to work collaboratively to find a suitable location for an Erie water storage facility. Two studies were completed by each of those municipalities, one being Lafayette, regarding the water treatment facility. That study concluded that the site was not appropriate for Lafayette's intended use there. The Erie study, however, came back and concluded that the site would work for their water storage facility. And it's partly because of the elevation of that location. Water runs downhill, and it runs downhill and also to the east. So, it would facilitate Erie's needs in the immediate vicinity, most specifically within nine mile. And then, that purchase and sale agreement was tendered approved by council on May 27th, and the first reading of that is the next agenda item tonight. So, just for some context on the current zoning relative to the proposed zoning, the Transitional Business District has setbacks. The public district does not. It also has a slightly shorter height, 27 feet versus the 35 feet that's allowed within the public district. One of the main impetuses for the change is to reduce the potential land uses out here. Traditional business district allows for residential and commercial development. The public district is really geared towards a government-owned facility, which this would be if it transfers to Erie, and it's a civic use. So, this is more appropriate. The same rezoning would have occurred had our study proved that the water treatment facility worked for the city's purposes. And then, the last thing to kind of clarify is that development on this site, regardless of whether or not it was within transitional business or public district, would still go through a city review process, and that doesn't change with Erie's ownership. So, staff analysis is based off of section 26168, and that zoning criteria requires that one of the four conditions here be met or criteria be met. The first one relates to like a zoning error or a technical change. B relates to change or changing conditions in a particular area of the city. C relates to something that's necessary to conform with the comprehensive plan. And D is necessary to provide a community-related land use that was not anticipated. So, staff's recommendation is that it fits criteria B, and we're recommending approval accordingly. Planning Commission heard this at their meeting earlier this month, and they added a different condition, and it was related to that change in zoning parameters. So, they're recommending that the height actually be limited to 27 feet or something that may be less should new zoning regulations require a lower height restriction. So, that was the one concern they had with the change in zone districts. And then, just for a little bit more context, there is also the setback that doesn't exist within transitional business. They do exist, and it doesn't exist within public district. This was also discussed by Planning Commission. But there are easements on both the west and east side of the property that help give it some sort of distance away from both the residential development and Aspen Ridge to the immediate east. So, the staff memo and recommendation still reads as originally drafted. If you agree with Planning Commission's recommended condition, you would need to read that into your motion tonight. But that's it for my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Okay, let's do questions first then, yeah. Any questions for staff? No? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up to public input. If you wish to speak during this time, please fill out a speaker form and bring it to the front. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm not seeing any in person or any callers online. So, we will close public input, get back to council discussion, and then see if there are any questions or discussion items. If not, we'll take a motion, please. Oh, go ahead, Council.
And you may have said this. Is the 27-feet height limit, will that pose an issue based on what you know?
We don't have a proposal yet. I mean, the intent would be for most of that to be... I mean, there's a potential for it to be underground. There's a potential for it to...
Sure.
But until we have a supplemental to respond to, we don't know whether or not it needs to be 10 feet tall or 20 or 30 or what the case may be.
So, if we put a condition on, we put that condition on, and you find out it needs to be 28 feet, you have to, what, bring that back to Planning Commission and council? Or how would that work?
It would need to go to Planning and Commission and council regardless right now under our code for a site plan review. It would need something different, like right now, it would need a PUD or a variance in order to go exceed that height. So, it would add another layer to that review process. But it would need to go to Planning Commission and City Council right now regardless.
Regardless.
Something else to clarify?
If I may add, so Director was saying that the whole application will need to come to you. But if you did need to change, if you did impose the 27-foot condition in the zoning, in the rezoning, you would need another rezoning ordinance to change that in the future to a higher height. Just wanted to be clear. It would require a rezoning ordinance to change that regulation.
A second. Okay.
And what would the height limit be under the zoning that we're proposing today?
35 feet.
35, okay.
Anything else? Any other questions? No? Okay, if someone feels ready, we'll take a motion, please.
I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 11, series 2025, rezoning certain city-owned real property legally described as Lot 1A, West Ridge filing number one, repla A, in the city of Lafayette from the Transitional Business T1 Zone District to the Public Zone District.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Can we make, can we make an amendment?
Well, so there's, this is part of the added discussion? Would you like to amend the motion? Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion to put a condition that it's at, that the height, the maximum height is 27 feet.
The maximum height is 27?
So, it's taken the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Right. It's basically amending the motion to incorporate the Planning Commission recommendation to limit the height of the development on the property to 27 feet, which basically is the current zoning height. So, rezoning, leaving the height the same.
So, you would just add the language here that says, you know, the last part of this essentially, which was to limit the height to 27 feet. And then, we justified it. We added the language to clarify where that's coming from. And then, Planning Commission, also knowing that we have a code update on the horizon, wanted to include the supplemental language that it's whichever is less. So, if that new zoning for public district technically ends up being less than 27 feet, the height limit is either 27 feet or something that's less if it changes. That was their full intent of that condition. So, you can either do the simpler version and just leave it at 27 feet, or you can layer in their full recommendation, which was to anticipate some sort of change in the future and make sure that if it came back and we are recommending like a 20-foot height limit for public districts, that this wouldn't come back because their intention was for it to be the least impactful result out there for development.
Sure, but my motion was to limit the height, the maximum height to 27 feet.
Okay, you can move it at that, too.
Yeah, so therefore, if it comes in and the new zoning says it's 25 feet, it's still, that wouldn't be the, that wouldn't be the... You could still do it with the motion, meaning...
So, you're saying 27 feet, that's your motion?
Yes, just the maximum height on the development of the property is 27 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have, we have a second to that amended motion of adding that height limitation of 27 feet. We have a second for that.
Second.
Okay. All right, so we're going to vote on the amended motion first. That's the original language with Council Sampson's added language of the height restriction. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Two opposed. If I'm correct, yeah. Clerk Beck, we have Council Friedland and Mayor Potomac Wong opposed. That motion passes five to two. Because that passes, I'm wondering if we have to vote on the original motion still?
Yep, yes.
We still do.
All right. So, the original motion is still on the table. Motion by Mayor Potomac Wong, seconded by Council Friedland to approve the original language. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mayor. As amended.
Yeah, it's amended because it passed.
The amendment passed.
The amendment passed.
So, you're now voting, I'm sorry, if there's, yeah, so we can help council with the procedure. So, you are now voting on the main motion, which is this motion, but with the amendment to...
You amended 27 feet.
To limit the height to a maximum of 27 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? None opposed.
Okay.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you for that clarification. All right. That concludes item I. Thank you. Let's get to item J now. This is first reading of ordinance number 12, series 2025, authorization authorizing the sale of certain city-owned real property legally described as Lot 1A, West Ridge filing number one, repla A, city of Lafayette to the town of Erie of our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be brief. So, this evening, I'm presenting to you on first reading ordinance number 12, which will authorize the sale of Lot 1A, West Ridge filing number one, repla A, to the town of Erie. And tonight, we're going to get, I'm going to give you a very brief background because this does involve the same property that we just spoke about in your last agenda item for ordinance number 11. And that background includes reference to a purchase and sale agreement that council recently approved, as well as a charter section, a provision of our charter that requires an ordinance before the sale of city property can be done. And you'll have an opportunity to discuss and ask questions, and I'll have a recommended motion for you. So, again, same property you just discussed. This property is located, it's a city-owned property located south of Timber Trail and west of Aspen Ridge Drive, approximately 2.89 acres, and it's in the process of being rezoned to public. This is a vacant property. On your, at your special meeting on May 27th, the council, you council did approve a purchase and sale agreement between the city and Erie in which the city agreed to sell this particular parcel to the town of Erie in accordance with certain terms and conditions that are in that agreement. One of those conditions includes the passage by you of an ordinance authorizing the sale of the property as required by our Home Rule Charter. That charter provision, for council's information, is section 12.1 subsection A. And as you can see here on the screen, it says that the council "may, on the terms and conditions you deem appropriate and by ordinance, without the prior approval of the registered electors of the city, you can sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of public property." So, if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer those. Just to summarize real quick, this ordinance simply authorizes the sale as required by our charter. You have already approved the purchase and sale agreement for this property.
All right, questions? Thank you so much. Any questions from council? No?
All right, great. I have a recommended motion for you, Council.
Thank you so much. Whoever feels ready.
I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 12, series 2025, authorizing the sale of certain city-owned real property legally described as Lot 1A, West Ridge filing number one, repla A, in the city of Lafayette to the town of Erie in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement dated May 27, 2025.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes regular business for tonight. And so, we'll wrap up, wrap up our meeting tonight with reports, beginning with our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Council. I do not have any reports this evening.
Thank you so much. Onto our city manager's report.
Okay, thank you, City Council. Couple things to report. You have probably been by the new Starkey Building, much brighter. The renovation is complete, and we'll be having an open house this coming Sunday, the 22nd, from 1:00 to 2:30. It looks great. We hope you can join us. We'll be having music and tours. It's a pretty quick tour, but, and just a chance to kind of see the facility. And then, we will be opening the Mental Health and Human Services grant application, June 23rd, so next week. And the previous applicants will be notified of the grant opening, and then, we'll do a newsflash, and we'll do a post on social media to announce the opening.
Sorry, a quick question about that. Do you have, I forget, do you have to be a nonprofit to apply for the Health and Human Services?
You do, yeah.
You have to be?
Yep. And you have to be providing services to residents of the city of Lafayette. And interested applicants can learn more by visiting the website. And Juneteenth closures, so Thursday, most city facilities will be closed for Juneteenth in celebration. And the facilities that will be open, the Indian Peaks Golf Course will be open from dawn to dusk. The Great Outdoors Water Park will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And the BBRC will also be open from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then, coming up, our look ahead, June 24th workshop. We will have our mid-year financial update, and then, we'll have a discussion about the capital projects ballot language. July 1st, we will introduce the civics competition winner recognition. And then, we have a proclamation for Plastic Free July, a sustainability update. And then, second reading of the rezoning and the purchase and sale. We expect to bring that back on second reading. We are still waiting to make sure that everything goes through with Erie. So, we're hoping that'll happen at that date. That's all we have.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll wrap up tonight with council reports. I will start down at the end. Council Tavio Vigo.
Sure, just one thing from me, and it's a big thank you to two members of the LCAB that unfortunately are no longer on the LCAB, Iruka Hikaru and Greg Fields. Just thank you for all you did for us. That's it.
Thank you. Council Friedland.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Council Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to share with council that, just reiterate this, Juneteenth, this Saturday is an initial step in trying to build a closer relationship with the city of Longma with events and cultural exchange, sort of like this is the kind of idea, but much smaller scale. So, that will be starting at 3:00 p.m., going to 7:00 p.m. in Roosevelt Park. That's 700 Longspig Avenue in Longma. And I'll be staffing a booth that will have the cultural arts department's tent. And this was a result of the conversation between Councilor Shikita Yarbo and I about how to, in this one case, do some cultural exchange. And if you want to get your groove on, Soul School is playing, Mofuto Mensa, and someone called Sardé. So, there will definitely be music there. If you need to shake something, come on over. And the, just wanted to make a comment about, I did go on a tour with Grant Swift, the chair of the Lafayette Open Space Advisory Board. And I learned a great deal about the history of the earth in Lafayette and some boundaries. And I really, if you haven't gone, I highly recommend it so you can see the spaces in a new light. So, I really appreciate that tour. And I think it's the farm. I didn't know what the farm was, but it's not a farm. It's just a big plot of land. And it has a very tall stand of smooth broom, which is an introduced species of grass, and it's deep. And it's part of what I need, I think we need to think about moving forward is the, how well will this city survive? You know, as weather events change and climate change, we talk about that. One of the things that I want to bring up is that there is no, there is no really good plan for extreme heat events. FEMA is not prepared for, what's left of FEMA is not prepared for extreme heat events. We are thinking about cooling, cooling centers for people who are challenged. And we've talked about tree, talked about tree canopies, and we're a tree city. One of the things to keep in mind is the deeper your grass, the more capacity it has for absorbing heat. And what's wet, if it's wet, it can absorb a lot of heat. I was going to bring a water balloon in here and light it, try to light it with a match so you could see that it will not light, but I didn't talk to the chief about doing that.
The fire chief?
Yeah, yeah. But that's one of the, that's a heat sink. So, for residents, if you're thinking about, you know, growing your grass a little bit taller, please do so. That will help provide cooling for the entire city. And you, you've probably noticed if you're in an area where there's lots of lush vegetation around you, it's a little bit cooler. That's not an accident. And I'll repeat, shade can reduce temperature 10 to 15 degrees. So, take care, if you have shade, as it gets hotter, and I think we hit 90 degrees every year the last three days. We're not like Phoenix, which is in an unbelievable streak of 100-degree days. Now, we're doing well, but take care of those green things that are outside, your neighbors' green things to keep us cool. And I, I do want to repeat, I've spoken with members of the senior advisory board and mentioned to the Sustainability Resilience Advisory Board that when, if there is a communication that they'd like to have with us to come to public comment, and they can ask us questions, and then, we will respond in public, our counselor comments will respond to those queries. So, they have some guidance on how to move forward. And one of those things I'd like to know from council is when we say the word resilience, is it perfectly clear what that means to the city and, or for the city moving forward? And I'd just like everybody in council to think about that and then have, hopefully, someone from SRAV describe how that lays over what we're thinking about because that deep grass is a resilience piece. Retaining the farm, leaving the farm as is, is one of those things that can help us long, you know, well into the future. And that is, oh, and I'm going to, I think I'm going to be able to attend the commuting solutions meeting next Tuesday, the 24th. I don't know if anybody else is going.
What time is that?
It's early in the morning.
I think it's like 7:30 to 9:00.
So, the breakfast is in your office, right?
Yes, at the Butterfly Pavilion. You don't eat the butterflies, but it's there.
I hope not.
And I think that's all I wanted to say. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Potomac.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Number one, Dr. Cog is tomorrow night, so we're discussing the HVAC licensure program that was passed. So, that's being a conversation with Dr. Cog tomorrow night in addition to some updates to the traffic plan and the HOG, the Housing Goals Plan, that's being discussed. So, that's tomorrow night. There's also, happens to be Consortium of Cities was moved back until tomorrow night as well. So, I probably will not be able to attend both, but we'll see if I can, what I can do from bone before, before Dr. Cog starts. And then, the other thing I want to just call out is what happened and what's weighing on my mind right now is what happened in Minnesota with the state senators. Elected officials who are being targeted for differing opinions. And this is a, ooh, thank you. And this is a problem, I think, in our greater society. And so, I would just ask the community that if you disagree, it's okay to disagree. We saw us disagree tonight. But I think that at the end of the day, we still respect each other's individuals and electeds, and that's something we have to carry forward, no matter what side of the aisle you're sitting on. Because to demonize somebody because of their different opinion is not right. And I just want to relate it to one public comment that we received regarding Mr. Wanaka as a landowner who does own a significant portion of our eastern side of the city. Now, his family's owned that land for generations, and they have a right to dispose of that land as much as possible. They've sold a good portion of it to us as a city at a great price for us to have the Centennial Farm, other tracts of land that picked up with that. But to outright demonize somebody because they want to sell their land, it's just not right. And we need to get away from that. And in my last four months on council, I plan on calling that out. I plan on calling everything out because I think we, as a community, can do better. I think we need to do better. And change happens when it happens locally so we can affect those things that happen at a larger level, at the state and federal level. So, I will call out the local stuff because I think it does... So I will call out the local stuff, because I think it does speak relevance, and so please, if you have a disagreement with your neighbor, have a discussion, if you can't have a discussion, don't talk about it, but please do not demonize somebody just because you disagree with them, or that you want them to maybe see your side, because demonizing somebody whose land you may want to purchase for open space may not necessarily be the best idea. So just trying to putting that out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Sampson?
I want to thank Thomas Razzo and his family foundation for that generous offer he made in the public comment tonight, I don't know where it'll go, but I just wanted to thank him, that was a, that was a generous offer. I also want to say to Mr. Patton, you're right, the Indian Peaks Trail is a beautiful meandering road through a neighborhood. I personally do drive 25 miles an hour or less through that neighborhood, because it is gorgeous, but what he did bring up was the fact that we, this is a neighborhood of houses, of kids, of people, you know, of all ages, and so anytime driving through a neighborhood, we need to slow down, and we need to make sure that we are aware of our surroundings. And I left a flyer for all the council members, I'm holding it up so people know who it is. This flyer is ADUs, I was able to go to Studio Shed, and they build ADUs in our community. And why I brought you this is because the regional homelessness initiative that I sit on and represent Lafayette for, is looking at two types of goals, and kind of wants to know which way, which one to put priority on. One is to promote ADUs, either by creating approved plans for people to put those ADUs on their property, or maybe finding out what the burdens are, and looking at some code language to reduce those burdens, so that's number one. Or two, we were presented with, find land and build tiny home community on it, and they would, they, the Boulder County said we would need 300 or 400 units to address the homeless need in the county, and so, and both come with some, you know, the pros and cons. The tiny home community, based on that, would need about 51 acres. I did say there is not 51 acres in Lafayette that we could use for this, but if some other community wanted to host it, I'm sure the city of Lafayette would be fine with that. But if you, if you have any comments for me, I'm not going to ask you to speak to, you know, tonight, but I'm presenting that, please just email me, and give me your thoughts in terms of, if it was up to you, which would you, as a Boulder County region, want to prioritize our efforts towards, knowing that funding, you know, there's a, there's only a limited amount of funding on time. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for doing that. Counselor Gallegos?
The Lafayette Youth Advisory Board is hosting a special event tomorrow called Teens Talk Adults Listen, it focuses on teen mental health. If you're interested in attending, it is in the lower level of the library from 6:30 to 8:00, and I also wanted to share that applications for the youth advisory board are open until July 31st.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For me, so it seems like some of us are going to be gone next week for the CML conference, which I didn't realize until we had the city managers report that we have a workshop on the 24th, and the conference does start on the 24th, so I will be gone, who else will be at, at that conference? Justice Gallegos, will you be there?
I am attending, I was planning on coming to the workshop and driving up after.
Afterwards, okay, I have to be there earlier. Is anyone else going to CML?
I am.
Will you be here on Tuesday, the 24th?
I think I will be, I think I will be, because I think I'm driving back late that night. I'll let you know.
Well, you have to be, because I'm not, okay, all right, all right, well, let me know.
I'll let you know.
But I don't think I'll be there, so, but I.
That means the workshop has to be, if we have two people driving up, the workshop has to end on time.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm going to be gone earlier, so I will not even be at the workshop. I could be at a, at a specific session there earlier in the day.
Sure.
So I'm okay with like whatever decisions are made based on the, on the ballot language or the other discussions, so please feel free to move forward without me on that. And then earlier today, I had a meeting with the, some members of the Longmont City Council regarding that Fish Bowl conversations on minimum wage, and a couple of members of staff were on the call as well, so it looks like, a lot of it was sharing Longmont specific information, but it looks like that they are scheduling the Fish Bowl for August, that's when the discussion will happen, Lafayette is, is going to be a part of that discussion. We will have to provide some Lafayette-specific data, and that may be a little tricky, just because we don't have access to a whole lot of it, but, you know, Alex mentioned on the call, there are some businesses in Lafayette that overlap with businesses in Longmont, like we both have a Post, the Post is in both cities, we both have Tangerine, Teal Cali, like there's a few, and Walmart and things like that, there's a few business, there are several businesses that we can kind of compare to Longmont's data to ours, so maybe if staff, you know, spend some time looking into those specific things, that way we come with that discussion, but I believe Counselor Barnes, are you going to be part of that discussion as well, if you're available?
Yeah, I would work to, I don't know what date it's scheduled, but I'll.
They haven't set a specific date, they just said August, but when the details come out, I'll send them over to you. But they want two representatives from the city there, so.
And that, that is interesting, because we also heard from the Longmont DDA, since I'm the council liaison, Longmont has the oldest DDA in Colorado.
Oh wow.
Forty-three years, so it was really informative to have them at the last DDA meeting, I forgot to talk about that, the last DDA meeting, we heard from Longmont, Inglewood, and Golden, their DDAs, Inglewood's the newest one in Colorado, and Inglewood's in the, in the middle there, so it was super informative to hear what they've been able to do with their DDA, so that, maybe that's another area that we could talk about is, there's similarities that we have a DD, because not everybody has DDAs.
Right. So that, yeah. Yeah, maybe try to see who their council liaison is.
What could they do?
Yeah, okay, and then finally, thank you all so much for our discussions tonight, I really am grateful for the city council, we are very, you know, at the end of the day, mature and supportive of one another, and don't go to bed angry, you know what I'm saying, all right, so, without meeting adjourned. It's because we're married.